It's four o'clock, April 17th. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
And if you'll stand, we'll do a pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Item 3.1, the day of April 22nd, 2017, as multiple sclerosis awareness day in the city of Salina, Jenna Ferris and Brent Kirkhart will read the proclamation.
Hi there, thank you. My name is Brent Kirkhart, the chairman of the MS Walk, and we've been having that every year, but we thought we'd try to get a proclamation on this. Jenna Ferris, she's a senior here at Kansas Wesleyan. She's been helping with us on the committee the last three years, and she's done an ab- ab- absolutely fabulous job helping with everything. And she's going to read the proclamation for us.
Thank you. Go ahead Jenna.
Multiple sclerosis, MS interrupts the flow of information between the brain and the body and stops people from moving. It is an unpredictable disease of the central nervous system and every hour someone is newly diagnosed in the United States. The Mid-America Chapter of the National MS Society reports that MS affects an estimated 2.5 million people worldwide, 400,000 nationwide, and over 4,600 in Kansas. Often first diagnosed in individuals ages ranging from 20 to 50, attacking them in the prime of their lives, MS is the most common neurological disease leading to disability in young adults. The symptoms of MS range from numbness and tingling to blindness. The progress, severity, and specific symptoms of MS that any one person cannot yet be predicted. But advances in research and treatment are moving closer to a world free of MS. The Mid-America Chapter of the National MS Society has been committed to mobilize people throughout Kansas who want to assist those affected with MS. On April 22nd, 2017, the National MS Society will sponsor the Salina MS Walk located at Kansas Wesleyan University. The mission of the National MS Society is to mobilize people and resources to drive research for a cure and to address the challenges of everyone affected by MS.
Go ahead. You can just read the whole thing.
Oh, okay. Now therefore, I, Ken Crawford, mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of April 22nd, 2017, multiple sclerosis awareness day, and urge that every citizen of Salina help join me to raise awareness for this disease that has no one, has no known cause and no known cure. We recognize the importance of moving closer to a world free of multiple sclerosis and express appreciation to the Mid-America Chapter of National MS Society for its work.
In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, be affixed this day, April 17, 2017. And Brent, what are your activities this week?
Well, this week, we're, like I said, we're just kind of getting ready for the walk. But the walk, we do like a one or two mile walk around Kansas Wesleyan, going to finish on the 50-yard line. But just, we have like door prizes, we have food, and we just kind of have this, let people kind of get aware, you know, what's, what MS is all about. And we just kind of, you know, we have some booths up there, we can answer questions of people. There'll be several of us that, I think we have 10 of us that have MS, but then we also have people that's caregivers that participate a lot. And we got a lot of family and friends that are doing the walk. I think we have 70 to 80 walkers usually, so that's usually what we'll have, and just kind of a awareness. But this year, it's going to be on the northwest corner of the football field where it's going to start this year. And then we'll go walk around throughout the campus and everything and just kind of have a enjoyable day and just kind of making a MS awareness of what's going on with everything.
Thank you for doing that. It's very necessary.
I'm sorry, what time does, what time do your activities start?
At, the registration begins at 10 o'clock and the walk begins at 11:00, and then usually takes, doesn't take much for a mile or two mile to walk, but then it goes probably to about 1:00 or, you know, 12:30, just however it comes, just hoping the weather holds out for us and.
Never know.
We never know.
You're in Kansas.
So we're not going to assume anything.
Right.
And if I could add, obviously as a neurologist, this is a near and dear topic for me. You can't actually get in one or two miles walking around Kansas Wesleyan's campus. You wouldn't think so, but you, if you zigzag enough, you actually can. And for most of us, this is our only chance to ever get to the 50-yard line on a football field. But even if you can't come, consider making a donation. The MS Society is one of those organizations that actually uses its money to help people locally and in very tangible ways. So you'll find that very little goes for administrative expenses. It's, it's money that actually works. So if you don't want to come out, please send a check. And I will be there, I haven't registered yet, but I'll be there.
Thank you. And like, like Dr. Davis said, yeah, you can reach her on the nationalmsociety.org or there's a phone number, but you could donate and anyway, and all the money raised goes directly to the research and everything. It doesn't pay anybody's fund or salary or anything, it just goes directly towards the research and everything, 100%.
That's good. Sometimes we send money and we don't know what happens to it, so, so it's good to hear that. Okay, I have your proclamation here for you, if you'd like to have, take it with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear you're going, Dr. Davis. Mark Chafee was double checking with me to make sure you'd be there, so, Mark is going to be there. Okay.
Did you go last year?
Yes.
I thought so.
I beat you to the 50-yard line.
Right. I remember that now, yes.
Item 3.2, presentation of certificate of commendation to three civilians for life-saving efforts from the Salina Fire Department.
Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commission members, here this afternoon to bring well-deserving recognition to individuals whose actions are above and beyond those of a teammate and a teacher. And before I continue, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Aaron Hurd. Plays a very important part in this story. On December 6th, 2016, student Aaron Hurd was in class when he suffered a cardiac episode and fell to the ground. Aaron lost consciousness and stopped breathing. His teammate on the Kansas Wesleyan University baseball team, Rex Campbell, was sitting next to him and immediately jumped into action. Rex assessed the situation and began CPR while asking bystanders to call 911. After the call to 911, Dr. Lonnie Booker and Professor John Burchell arrived in the classroom to assist Rex with CPR. Shortly afterwards, the Salina Fire Department arrived and began advanced life support procedures, including pit crew CPR and aggressive cardiac drug therapy on scene, and were able to regain Aaron's pulse before transporting him to Salina Regional Medical Center. Aaron has made a complete recovery and intends to continue his baseball career here at Kansas Wesleyan next year. Aaron is extremely lucky. He had everything going for him that day that the American Heart Association recommends. There was a recognition of a cardiac arrest by a trained bystander, in this case Rex. There was immediate activation of the 911 system. There was immediate CPR done by bystanders, in this case such as Rex, Dr. Booker, and Professor Burchell. There were superior advanced life support measures performed, in this case by the Salina Fire Department. And finally, Aaron had to benefit having the best, or what I consider the best EMS service in the state treating him on the scene. Last year, there were approximately 356,000 cardiac arrests experienced outside the hospital setting. Of those treated by emergency medical service, only 12% survived. Aaron here in front of you today is a proof of the quality of your EMS system in this community. There's a saying that goes, "Good people do good things, but exceptional people do exceptional things." I truly believe that. My eyes, these three people are in fact exceptional in going above and beyond their service to their classmate and student. Along those lines, I'd also like to commend Kansas Wesleyan baseball coach Bill Neal and Dr. Matt Thompson, president of Kansas Wesleyan, for their ability to recruit and welcome students such as Aaron and Rex that bring a quality of integrity and community service, not only to their fine university, but to our community in this city. Also to have such dedicated instructors as Dr. Booker and Professor Burchell is a testament to the quality and commitment of the staff at Kansas Wesleyan. People such as these really do make our job much easier. So with that, I'd like to have Rex come up here, and Dr. Booker, and Professor Burchell. Salina Fire Department would like to award a certificate of commendation on behalf of the city of Salina to Rex Campbell, Dr. Lonnie Booker, and Professor John Burchell.
Aaron, you should be.
All right, get close everybody.
Yes, picture.
One, two, three.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did all of these gentlemen that were involved in this have had CPR experience? Is that what you said, that they had had?
Well, that's an interesting story. If Rex wants to come up and, and talk about it, I'd be welcome to, to hear it.
Uh, it's pretty simple. Yeah, so I was taking a CPR course at the college, and we had taken our final the night before.
Really?
Everything happened, so.
That's wonderful.
It was, it was pretty special.
And Aaron is here today.
Yes, he is.
Right. Well, congratulations and thank you once again, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to citizens forum. Anyone here who would like to bring anything to us before, that is not on the agenda? Please come forward and give your name and address. Is there anyone like to bring anything to us for information? Okay. Thank you, we'll go on, there's no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time. Go on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 10th, 2017. And item 6.2, approve resolution number 17-7445, appointing members to the Animal Control Advisory Board, Arts and Humanities Commission, and the Library Board.
Okay. Anyone want to pull anything there? If not, all, enter a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Mr. Bangston, do I need to move 7.5 down on the agenda? Need to, Jason said we might need to move that down.
Oh, yeah. I don't know that it would be, need to be moved, I apologize. I'm trying to pull my agenda up is why. Looking so dumbfounded. Yeah, we're good, we can leave it as is.
Okay, okay. Okay, 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 17-10880, changing the zoning district classification from PDD I-2 to I-2 on property located on the north side of Schilling Road, east of Centennial Road.
Okay. Ordinance number 17-10880 was passed on first reading on April 10th, 2017. Since that time, no comments have been received. Planning Commission finding number one has been deleted from section of the ordinance because city commission did not concur with that finding in their action approving ordinance on first reading. So I entertain a motion for approval on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 17-10880.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval on second reading, ordinance number 17-10880. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Carrie, 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading ordinance number 17-10881, changing the zoning district classification from C1 and R3 to HM on property addressed as 523 South Santa Fe Avenue, 535 South Fifth Street, and 537 South Fifth Street.
Okay. Ordinance number 17-10881 was passed on first reading on April 10th, 2017. Since that time, have there been any comments been received? No, there has not? Okay. I'll entertain a motion on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 17-10881.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on ordinance to pass, or, second reading ordinance number 17-10881. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. 7.3.
Item 7.3, request to authorize staff to prepare a special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase 2 of the Cedar Ridge addition.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I bring you this item today, you might recognize the blue sheet though. This is a longer blue sheet than Mr. Stack and the engineering group is used to, so I have to just qualify that Dean really helped us a lot with this blue sheet. There's a lot of history here. So I, no, if you want to go through the entire history of this subdivision, there is a lot of history here that he went through from a lot of the different plats over the years and planning commission action and city improvement district action that's occurred here. It used to be the old Cloud, Cloud, Cloud Street, I guess, Cloud Street, Elks Country Club area that was redeveloped when Mariposa went in and the new Cedar Ridge Drive was, was put in there. This area was platted and built along with that, with that, in that time period of the mid 2000s to kind of realign Cedar Ridge Drive as well as build some residential subdivision in that area. So thus far, there's been, I'm trying to find exactly how many houses have been built, but there is, it's nearing basically build out of their phase. Looks like maybe 25 lots in Phase 1, is what Dean had said. And Mr. Hayworth is here today, if you have any specific questions regarding that, but it seems to be, have almost been built out, says that he's ready to build the second phase. The second phase does consist of a few lots on the east end of this, of this area. Basically, building one street with the storm sewers and water and sewer for that area as well as a couple of houses on the west side to start the, basically just a few houses that are close to being able to be constructed now, but we have to build a little bit of a street and a couple, a little bit of curb and sanitary sewer and water connect, to connect them. So there's, if you look at the map, at the very end, there's about three houses kind of on the east, on the, on the west side that basically, it's kind of two phases. I guess we've got little green dots on there, a little bit hard to see, but it's about 16, oh, we can tell 16 lots. I miscounted, I believe, I thought I, I thought it was 19, but it's 16 lots, so. Basically is asking for a continuation of this subdivision, so we, he's asking if we could provide the feasibility report and go through the benefit district process to basically just authorize staff to start that process. So it's, it's per the current resolution, 894066, which was then modified in 2013. We, we're not, we don't have to do that without your permission. So basically, we want to get here before we go through a lot of that extra work to prepare the feasibility and petition process, and that's why we're here today. Entertain questions?
Questions.
Quickly on a fiscal note, to go to the next level of the process, what, what amount of staff involvement and expense is, is expected on this?
Oh, it's, you know, usually just a few weeks. It's not terribly a lot of process. It's, we usually get the estimate from the developer and the plans, and then once that occurs, we get the, go through kind of the cost, engineers then estimate from them and then look at the fees or costs that we've had over the years as far as costs to construct the different various stages of the infrastructure. And then put together the benefit district, which is, in this case, it's a per lot benefit district, so it's just 16 lots divided by total cost of improvement, so it's not, it's not terribly, it's in a lot of staff time, but it's just enough to where, we also need to know what that percentage would be. So historically, last few years, there's been a 75-25 split, or an 80-20 split, or 100% splits. That's what, that's the other thing maybe to talk about today as well, on what, what maybe percentage you'd like to see in there.
Okay, well, I have questions maybe for the applicant.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
The applicant, want to come up and, Mr. Hayworth?
Yeah, my name's Bob Hayworth, I'm president and owner of Lee Hayworth Construction, longtime construction business and developer in the community. I've been involved with the business about 35 years, hard to imagine, but I have. On this application here, as you see, looking for the continuance of the Cedar Ridge subdivision, there was quite an insight, you know, many years ago actually, about how this area could be developed. And then through the Gray's family, then I started the process by buying a lot of the property from them and then did a lot of negotiation, both with Elks at that time and with the city of Salina to close down what was Cloud Street and then get all that constructed. All the earthwork, or work even in this Phase 2 area was completed in that road area where you can't even tell there's a road there, if you drive through there right now, by doing all the grading and stuff within the Phase 1 part of that, just to make everything look good. This phase, obviously 2, it's split, the one area was always planned to be Phase 2, which is to the east, the property. Farther to the west, it wasn't necessarily, but as I looked at that, I think for the drive-up appeal into the subdivision, I'd like to be able to build houses at that location to kind of finish off that street, and I cannot do that right now because the street was not continued far enough to be able to complete those homes on those properties. It's just trees, you know, vacant, and it, just to make everything look better from the Great Life Direction entrance, I thought that that would help put it together while this phase is being done also. That's the reasoning for that. As far as percentages wise, the, there's been all of the Cedar Ridge Road, the assessments for what that road cost has been put into the Phase 2 already. Try, been paying special assessments for that to date, and it's getting close to being paid for, obviously. So I have been paying specials for that. Some people may not know that, but even though those are vacant lots, there has been special specimens paid for that whole area. Even for some of the improvements on Mariposa, on, I'm sorry, on Country Club Road, where it meets Marymount Road, I mean, yeah, I'm sorry, Marymount Road, where it turns, or in that area, at the, be the northwest corner of this property, a lot of that street has already been paid for within the lower west end of the subdivision that I own. So I've already paid for all those street improvements also, with asking for some more, you know, money here. I'm obviously requesting for an 80-20 split, you know, for the area. Consider engineering study to look at some of the costs and have an idea to where then I could involve an engineering company to complete the plans. Right now, I'd had preliminary plans already done in the past, it shows all the elevations. It's not going to take very much to put the plans together to finalize it to where it would have to be ready for bid, according to a couple companies that I've talked to.
Okay. Questions?
Just a couple questions. Mr. Stack mentioned that there had been, that one of the first steps they'll do is get the estimate from you on, on what the costs are. On Phase 1, it looked like.
And I wasn't even aware of that until just now, because I thought they were going to give me the estimation.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say, Phase 1 was 412,000 and about 2,400 linear feet. Do we know, what, what level of, how many linear feet of improvements are we talking about on, on this next phase?
You'd have to ask him.
You, how many, how many lots?
16.
16 lots. You don't know how, how much?
No. I, in fact, I was just given the information, I was going to be at this commission meeting at noon.
Okay. Then I, and I ask this question every time, I'm sure some people are tired of hearing the questions, but I'm going to, I ask them every time, and I'll continue to ask until I get a good answer. Have you done a market analysis on this project?
Define what you would refer to as the market analysis that you'd like to see. There's lots of different market.
Let me, let me ask an even simpler question because I think I know the answer. Have you done a pro forma?
No.
Okay. Then you haven't done a market analysis. What, what level, and this is staff, I'm going to ask this of staff as well, because when I look out there, it's sort of this, I, I went online and I looked at this, and the, and the homes range here from 300, low 300,000s to nearly 500,000. And the 21 lots have been developed on, or 22.
Oh, as far as through tax assessments?
Right. Well, no, through whatever the county puts on there as, as valuation. It's not an assessed value, it's a, it's, it's the high, it's the appraised value.
Appraise, yeah.
Prairie Ridge?
Grand Prairie.
Grand Prairie, thanks. Across the street, and then the one that's west of you is, I can't remember the name of that subdivision, but it's the one.
River Run.
River Run.
River Run. And then there's Trail, the one we just did special assessments on, Trail. River Trail. And, and of course, Stone Lake out south of town are all kind of in this same area of value of homes.
I'm less value. I'm around 1,900 square feet is the average square footage in my subdivision. A lot of those subdivisions are averaging higher than 1,900 square feet.
Okay, I wasn't looking at square, I, I guess, to be fair, I was just looking at what the house, the value of the houses.
Whereas what I'm building is typically not as large as those other subdivisions. If you even drive through the subdivision, you could tell that visually.
And I think they're nicer. Give you that one.
I'm not going to say.
I think the value is, is earned. I mean, and I'm not talking about whether the size of the value is, I'm just saying that, that the value is there. And so the question I'm always asking is, what is, like, out of that, out of those four subdivisions, what do we have lot-wise that's already in that range of value, available with infrastructure already in place on it? And that's, do you know what the number is? Because I'm going to ask staff if you.
I, obviously, I would have no idea what that number is. For the detail that you would want, I would not have that information.
Okay. Here's, here's what I'm trying to get at. I've said over and over, and I hope you don't feel like I'm picking on you, because when Mr. Shepherd was here, I asked him. When Kelly Dunn and Craig Piercy were here, I asked them. asked them, what is mark, when are we going to get an idea of what market saturation is with that value of house? Because I look at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if this thing was built in nineteen, in two thousand and five, it's been about thirteen or fourteen years, and there've been twenty-one houses built.
Mm-hmm.
That is an extremely slow rate of growth. And it just seems like we have four or five subdivisions spread out with special assessments on a lot of stuff in this, in this price range. And my question to city manager is, is what kind of growth management style or technique are we going after here?
Commissioners, that's a, that's a kind of a broad question, in the sense that, at this point, your growth, your technique, your style is based on your comprehensive plan. That's the best that you have, and it's not market-driven from that perspective. So you don't have a plan that says, based on certain market factors, you would do this or that with special assessments. The best we have is the housing plan as well, the Lives Salina Housing Plan, and it kind of tries to give you some guidance for this, for a price range of higher than two fifty. It recommends private financing, or if it's contiguous, fifty percent of the development costs, and you have gone higher than that in some of the past subdivisions you just mentioned, as just a choice that you've made at that time. So I don't really have a formula for you from a market perspective, because we haven't been asked to, we'd have to hire a consultant to create that, and I don't know how valuable that would be. Because at some point, what happens is, is you get to make a decision on what you believe might be saturation, but that's a pretty open-ended, I think that's pretty open-ended as far as applying that to a, no, saying potentially no with regards to specials or some other aspect of development. So we could do that, it would be fairly costly, but right now, we don't have a formal consultant's report that deals with market factors and saturation of certain pricing of subdivisions or certain cost levels for special assessments.
All right, let me ask you this, because I don't think it takes a multi-thousand-dollar study to figure out if we're built, what, you can look at this and say the saturation rate is pretty low, okay, that these things aren't being absorbed into the market quickly. Special assessment financing, the policy was, before we got it changed to where it is now, where we have the opportunity to make a decision on it versus shall. The idea was, is to provide some sort of mechanism for which to bring about conditions to make housing more affordable, okay? The last, how many, how, I don't think we need a study and spend thousands of dollars on a study to say, this is how many houses we have, this is the, this is the demographic of the people that can afford these houses, and what's the likelihood that, what would our saturation rate be? I don't feel like I have enough information here to make a really well-informed decision, which is why I vote against these things, because at the very least, we're not doing a fifty-fifty. We're not doing a fifty-fifty on what the housing study said. The housing study also said that we will have two percent growth, and we need a hundred and sixteen houses a year. Well, I'm going to tell you, the Kansas certified population put out by the Secretary of State from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen shows a negative two hundred and thirty-two population number. So we're not growing at two percent currently, and it just seems to me that when we're twenty percent, our median household income in Salina is forty-four thousand dollars a year. State is fifty-three thousand, national is fifty-five. We're twenty percent below the state median income level. I don't know how this fits the demographic of who we need to find affordable housing for. If you've been to these meetings, you see that this is sort of my usual, trying to get the point across. I appreciate you coming in and making the eighty, twenty offer, I really do. Everybody else is, you know, it's kind of caught on, and I don't blame you for wanting less than what somebody else got. I just don't. I think we made a huge mistake when we didn't follow or have any policy in regards to that, when I say we, I'm only, I'm only talking five people here, actually, four. But we have got to get some sort of grip on, on our growth management in this community, because subsidizing three hundred thousand dollar houses is not sustainable. It just isn't. And, you know, I don't want to jump ahead, but boy, we're, we're looking at an action item coming up about affordable housing, low-income affordable housing. And it's like, we're either subsidizing three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, or we're subsidizing low-income housing. And you know what? One of them meets, one of them meets our guidelines for trying to find affordable housing. And, I don't know, anybody, can anyone on this board help me figure out how it is that we should be doing anything more than fifty percent participation with the, with the client?
Are most of those houses sold in that?
They're all sold.
Phase One, well, that kind of tells you, somebody's buying them.
I've got, I guess, three buildable lots, that's it.
And how many was the initial, how many lots were in the initial offering?
I'd have to count them here.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
So twenty-two lots have been sold and built on since two thousand and four or two thousand and five?
Five, I think, yeah, because we were, we actually just started building in sometime in five. I can't remember what time in five it was, because you can't start until after the streets are complete, so it might have been towards the tail end of five. I can't rem, it's been a while, obviously.
Wanting to tell you how new I am to the commission. When you said an eighty, twenty split, I assumed you'd be paying for the eighty, right? Or was that, was that us for the eighty? Oh, oh.
For the other-
Oh, that's, that's, I was like, wow! This is awesome. Okay, well, all right.
Commissioners, one thing too, is that we're talking about a subsidy. The subsidy, if there is any, well, as you know, what happens is, is the idea of the way special assessments are administered is, is that, once they're approved, then the owner of the lots is responsible to make the payments. I think most of you know that. So Mr. Hayworth would be responsible until such time as he sells the lot. So presumably, he may build a house, or he may sell a lot to someone else who may build a house, and then at that point, they take over responsible, responsibility for paying the special assessments. And I think we've been working off of fifteen years, Dan, I think that's correct. So if, if, as long as he makes payments, what's happening is, is that the private developer is actually paying for the infrastructure. Now, there's little questions about cost and interest rate and some of that, but in essence, that's the intent of the program. However, it's fronted, I think there's no question about that, the cost of the infrastructure is fronted by the city. You finance the infrastructure, some of that financed cost is passed on, but the principal cost of all the improvements is passed on to the developer. The fear is if there is a default, and if there's a default, then all of a sudden, the special assessments don't get paid, but the debt service has to be paid, so of course, that would fall to the city to pay the debt service. So if, and then, at some point, if the specials, and at that point, you're going to see other taxes not paid as well, are not paid, then you're looking at probably a tax sale at some point in the future after that, and then you'd have to, kind of throw your dice out as far as that's concerned. Historically, we haven't had real issues with defaults, and it's not to say that we couldn't. I'm not going to look at Mr. Hayworth and say, hey, looks like you're going to default. We haven't had that. I can't say that we would or we couldn't. If I could predict that, well, I'd be doing other things. So I can't say generally if we're going to have issues with default or not. I can just say, historically, we have not had issues. So a lot of it goes back to, do you, since there's a real risk of default and what the impact of that would be. Another aspect probably goes back to, what do you believe the use of specials should be for, and then you can determine whether they're needed or not. And I think you've had opportunity here, the builders, talk about why they feel they're needed, and I'm sure Mr. Hayworth would be willing to share why he would like to have specials, and it's up to you to really take that, balance it, and make a decision.
And if I may add, if it's helpful, as we compare lots, the amount of the special assessments also becomes a point of comparison. And so, depending on when a subdivision was plotted and special assessed, depending on whether the developer paid for some of that infrastructure, as Mr. Gage described, over time, and that's paid down, that can make a difference in terms of how one lot compares to another. So as we prepare the feasibility study and zero in on what the special assessments might be, that would give us a better opportunity to compare this proposed subdivision to some of the others that are already out there and the special assessment amounts are known.
We have yet to, I guess, decide if our housing study was going to form the basis of any official policy we were going to set up. We use it when we think it's for our advantage, we ignore it when it looks like it gets in the way. And at some point, we need to get some more official use out of it, or decide we're not going to use. Commissioner Blatche, do you remember at the top of your head what the suggested support for, I thought at three hundred and fifty thousand, it cut off, and I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head.
I do, and I think, I think whoever it was mentioned that, mentioned the fifty percent at over two fifty. I will say this, the draft report of that housing study said zero, and when we came back with the final, somehow, it ended up as fifty-fifty. I never got a really good answer from the person that conducted the study on why that was, but that's how it ended up. And, you know, and I don't have any more questions, I don't want to make you stand there if you don't.
Well, the only thing I was wondering, when you, the way you're talking too, is, I started this development to put Cedar Ridge through based that I would be financed on special assessments for Phase Two, because I didn't even have to put Cedar Ridge through at that point. And I think that's been a huge asset for the community by completing that street, because I own the property along with the Gray's family, and the two of us wanted to improve that area, you know, for the city of Salina, and I think that's been a great improvement to have that pass through in that area. So I think I've contributed quite a bit to that area to do that, and that's why I think this phase with that improvement is even a larger improvement for the community to continue, you know, with housing. It's got some, obviously, as you said, not low income, it's golf, some golf course lots and some cul-de-sac lots. I curved the streets. I didn't make them, you know, do north, do south. I put curvature, I put character in the area, and I think that's worth something to consider too.
What was the percentage on the special assessments that you had before?
Eighty, twenty.
It was eighty, twenty, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just kind of, just for clarity, so maybe the next time we have this, I don't have to ask this again. I guess the point, I feel like, I feel like I'm up here a lot of times speaking a foreign language, to be honest with you. Here's what I'm trying to get at. I'm discouraged that we don't have any policy whatsoever that, that basically is for affordable housing. We don't. We tend to only get one type of product, and, you know, we hear that the market demand is so great, they're sold out of all the lots, but somehow, there's no market to finance it themselves. Here's the problem as I see it. We talk about how, the reason why we have to back these is because you don't have developers that are willing to take a risk on such a low rate of growth. Is that, is it fair to say that that's typically been the rationale given?
Well, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Hayworth or the others, but I think in the past, when we had conversations, that part of it is, is that the banks are usually, and presuming you have to rely on banks for financing versus partnerships and other forms, the banks are somewhat hesitant to loan a large percentage, and so there's a, we've, for quite, quite honestly, it's kind of like, it's unwinding an old system still, and so there's, there were decades and decades and decades of all systems in our community that just looked at special assessments as a typical financing tool for residential development. I'm not saying that's good or bad, it's just the way it was, and so, part of it is, is some of the factors you brought up and other factors is, they really haven't been looked at or analyzed, not even beyond here, but in the rest of the community too much. So I think the issue was, there was a concern from the developers as far as getting enough financing to cover the full cost of the infrastructure early on, when the system was kind of reliant upon specials, at least for a portion.
Well, and it kind of comes to the point, and that is, is that this subdivision that we're talking about right here, Phase One, is roughly fourteen years old. Now, if I remember, our pavement, pavement maintenance plan, it tells me that within that time period, you're doing at least two crack seals, and you're getting pretty close to approaching a milling inlay on that street, life cycle cost of that street. Now, here's the thing, when we have four different subdivisions that are, in a lot of cases, less than twenty percent built out, you have four different sets of extra roads that you're responsible for, because we own them now. And all I'm saying is that we tend to, we don't have developers that are taking on the risk of these jobs. We have individual home builders that play the role of developer for themselves, because they have the financing that makes the carrying cost of those lots much cheaper, rather than having to go purchase those lots in blocks or individually from a developer, where you basically, I think, shortcut your competition and your, and your affordability, at least on that level, but I think it trickles down to the, to the lower levels as well. So my main concern is, is that we have to take these roads, whether they have one house on them, or fifty, and we have to maintain those streets to the exact same, all the infrastructure to that same thing. I would rather let a developer come in and take the risk, and let the free market be more favorable to him, rather than saying, just if anybody that comes in and asks for this financing, we give it to you, and then we have all these roads that now, the entire, everybody that lives in the city gets to pay for all these roads, whether or not you have the tax dollars paying for those, and when you're, if you're, if you're not a build out till year fifteen, you're probably not, we're probably not capturing enough to make, to make that a win for, from the city's standpoint. So that's where I am, and I apologize to Bob. He's a, you know, you're a good builder, you're, you know, you know, but as you know, this isn't anything new that I've been trying to get across, and I think it's for the betterment of the, of the community and the taxpayers as a whole. So I hope that we can, Dr. Davis, to answer your question, get to something where we're doing it, but I'll be honest with you, I don't think we do that today, because then we treat Mr. Hayworth differently than we've treated other people. Unless Greg has got some, something else he can tell me that I would be wrong on that. I seem to think that, we can't do that, can we?
It's not encouraged, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Well, just, I have the chance to talk about maintenance.
Talk about streets.
Street maintenance. So he gave me a plot point for street maintenance, so I have to respond to that.
That's right.
No, it is a, we did just typically a few crack seals, and then a micro-surfacing is first. We just did that last year for this subdivision. We were a little later than we'd like to be able to, it looks like the streets were finished in oh five, so I wanted, I wanted to clarify that. They were finished in oh five, so we micro-surfaced in sixteen, that was eleven or twelve years after they constructed, so streets are in decent shape there thus far. But yeah, we typically try to micro-surface two to three times before we actually mill an inlay. So just to be fair to the residential streets that haven't had any milling inlays, well, we're late, well, it's been, that's kind of almost a thirty-year cycle, so I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that. Thank you.
Appreciate you clarifying, so, okay.
Thank you. Keep us advised on those streets, Mr. Stack.
Okay. Someone else at the back of the room? Hand it.
Can we see if there's any other questions here, or if there's a motion or anything?
Do you want to take some public comment?
And I just had one thing I wanted to ask or say.
Yeah, let's just get the questions all out first.
Just one thing, a couple of things real quick. I think something that this highlights to me, given the discussion about the previous site plan with the Popeye's Chicken on Ohio, and now with the special assessments, is just sitting up here would be really helpful if we had some guidelines in place to help us make our decisions and to apply the same rules equally to all developers. I agree, I don't want to punish Mr. Hayworth, because this is, you know, this is going to be our, our test case or whatever, but I, but somebody at some point is going to have to, if we decide to go down the route of developing special assessment guidelines, somebody somewhere is going to be the first one that this gets applied to. And I would just like to see if there's any interest among the commissioners to use that housing study, so that we can develop some sort of a sliding scale based on, on whatever is appropriate, whether that's the home value, or whether or not it's income-restricted or what have you, because I think we're working on site plan guidelines now, correct? On which projects that will require a site plan, and which ones will not, and I think that might, something similar might be helpful. And I think that might, something similar might be helpful for special assessments, so that we're fair to all builders and developers.
Yeah, we've hit the infrastructure requirements and perimeter street requirements, those you've addressed. We do have, we do have as a task item to come back with the special assessment policy in total, and address that policy. And that's an opportunity to get into all of those questions, and there are a lot of questions. We've really, we've staffed it a million times, we've had a lot of discussions, and quite honestly, what happens is, there's usually a difference of opinion, and it's usually fairly split. Because there was a time with no policy that it was commonplace, right or wrong, to use those as a common tool, working with the developer. And like I said, I'm not saying that's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do, and there's reasons you might not want to do it, and there's reasons that you may want to do it. In the end, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of preferential aspects to it that we'll try to help you with, but I don't know that I can add them up in dollars and cents and some of that. But we'll do whatever that you'd like us to do.
Okay, public comment.
Randall Holm, Hometown Realty, 311 East Crawford. I want to start out with saying I have no business connections currently with Robert. In answer, John, to your questions about demand and that, the National Association of Realtors has recently stated in one of their publications, at least nationally, the two highest demand, and with the least supply, is in that $110,000 to $150,000 category for new construction, and the number two is the $150,000 to $200,000 category of home. So I can see treating somebody that's going to be building properties that will meet at least the upper end, maybe, of that price range, is in part meeting what you're talking about, and that, and wanting to accomplish. I also want to speak on Hayworth Construction Company. They're the only current company in Slina Building Houses, that I'm aware of, that have survived over the last 55 years. Three of our great economic downturns, including the one that affected us the last 15 years, without turning any lots back to the city, or the city having to pick up any of the specials. I think they should be commended on that. The base closure, Billy, the Carter administration fiasco interest rate-wise, and the recent collapse that was maybe one of the worst our country's ever seen. You know, the fact that it's taken 14 or 15 years to fill those lots, I'm amazed you didn't get half of them back. Bob should be commended on not having done that, and finally getting that first section finished, and not putting any of that improvement cost burden back on the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Madam Mayor, move that we request staff to prepare a special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase Two of the Cedar Ridge addition?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, to authorize staff to prepare a special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase Two of Cedar Ridge addition. Any other discussion?
Commissioners, just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, no go.
I have a question, just a quick question for Mr. Stack. How imperative is it to have an idea of what percentage split you might need? Is that imperative now, or can that be determined later?
We could do a couple of different options, 75, 25, 80, 20. Would that cover the basis? Or do we need others? It's just basically splitting out the numbers, it's not too hard to give you a few options if that's what we need.
Do we have a motion and a second?
We do.
I'll go with that first.
I'd like to, I move that we make a 50/50 split, developer and city.
Do you want to amend your motion, or leave it as it's?
I made a motion to amend the motion.
Yeah, Commissioners, what would happen is, is with that amendment, you will now act on the amendment, and then whatever happens with the amendment, when that's complete, then you'll go back to the primary motion, I believe. I'll look at our parliamentarian, but I think we've been down that road before.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So I made, so there's a motion for the amendment on the table.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, a motion and...
Parliamentarian, are we able to discuss, have discussion on amendments, or no?
A motion to amend is subject to debate, yes.
Subject to debate, so, okay. Then, if I may, the reason being is that I think that, at some point, you know, we get there to a 50/50. If we don't, then we don't. But I just, I know that I've made that motion at other meetings, and I just, out of trying to be consistent, I'm just going to make that motion at this meeting as well. So I, thank you.
Just from plain devil's advocate side, we did grant, and I don't know whether it was 75, 20?
It was 80, 20.
80, 20, for a special assessment of the road with the artwork, the curves, and certain amenities. I guess if you were going to put in a special consideration, you might say this developer put in a street, maybe that he didn't have to. And this is the reason, you know, I've wanted to get the policy set, so there's a formula, there's a grid, so this really doesn't even have to come up to us, other, almost then to rubber stamp it. I just want to make, are we being inconsistent with our previous actions if we, on any given Monday, come up with different percentages?
I'm not voting against my vote.
Well, you know, not too long ago, you had the final housing policy accepted, you accepted the final housing policy, and it did provide for, again, for homes 250,000 and higher, that, recommended anyway, 50/50. Now, it's a recommendation, and that's what it is. And then I think the last two or three subdivisions, I can't remember if it was two or three, you did choose to go higher than the policy. So I think, I think going back to Commissioner Blanchard's motion, I want to make sure we understand the, kind of the findings behind, which would be to really utilize the housing policy, which would recommend 50%, 50/50 at a 250 and higher value of home.
Right, well, right, for that reason, exactly. And as far as the other question that was asked in debate, and that is, I think, on both of those other two actions, if I'm not mistaken, were there not, was there not a finding of fact, or conditions placed upon why that was adjusted from 50/50 to 80/20?
You did look at some quality enhancement features.
One was 75, 25.
Curvalier streets is all there was.
The other one was 20. Eighty/20.
Had curvalier streets, one had, I think, park property nearby, had a levee nearby, the other had some art component aspect in it. Now, it's up to you on how those differentiate. I think the point of it is, is, and I'll defer to Greg from a legal perspective, but practically, from a consistency perspective, is whatever the basis of your decision is, if you can be fairly consistent with that basis, probably in a pretty good place. If you can't be, then it does create questions.
Because I think it was, wasn't it Grand Prairie, that we, it was 80, was it? I may have the wrong name, but 80/20, I think it was.
I think that's correct.
I think it's important to note that we have provided 80/20 to this development before, and although the policy may have changed from 100% assessments, we may be winding it down, but we're also changing the economics of all the builders, that I think in order to be consistent, we ought to find a slow way to go here, not change, not pull a rug out from underneath the builders, so just jump to 50/50, I think is a severe change at this point.
I must admit, the two halves of my brain are duking it out right now, but I can see now why we had a moratorium on approving any of these for a while, because we didn't have a clear policy. And I can see us getting back to that moratorium state very quickly, until we can, I don't know, go in that room, or sit out here and do it, but come up with a plan that we could have, basically in principle and policy, already agreed to ahead of time. Not just the cost of the lot, but, you know, you can influence it by what types of housing we are most in need of in town. A lot of other factors might get you extra points. I'm somewhat swayed more by the fact that this developer did get 80/20 for what is essentially the same development. On the other hand, we have a policy which we haven't been good at adhering to, that says lots in this area should be capped at 50/50. But we've accepted that housing report, but we've never accepted it as policy, which is, we've never gone that last step. So I'm more afraid of being viewed as being all around the world on this than, and that's the part where I wish we had about a five-minute break to think this out, but we'll go ahead and figure it out now.
Well, I'll tell you, this is, some progress is always good. Because quite frankly, when I said we need to stop this cold turkey, I was told, hey, just do it 50/50. Now somehow 50/50 isn't good. I thought 50/50 is what we were told, hey, don't stop it all at once, boy, don't do that. So, I think we're, you know, it's like, it's kind of the whole moving the goalpost thing. It's like, when you, boy, when we get to the part where somebody satisfies the conditions that you say, let's do that, don't pull the goalpost out from under them. Encourage them.
Well, I think with those last two additions that were mentioned, that 50/50 may have been the base, and there were certain conditions which would elevate the 50 up to 80. But again, we don't, you know, if you asked me to list them right now, I probably couldn't produce the list, which is bad, if I'm going to sit here and judge this next application.
Let me just kind of put, you know, we had a housing, the housing study that should have been the basis for some sort of policy, did not say anything about, well, now if they did their Phase One under a certain set of circumstances or conditions, then they ought to be eligible for something under Phase Two. That was never part of any of the consideration. So, I, I'm just, I'm trying to be consistent with kind of where I've been.
And that point is very well taken, except I think we've broken that rule twice in the last four months.
Okay.
And it's the consistency that bothers me more than the amount.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would rather, if we're going to say 50/50, you know, from this day forth, if we're following that housing policy as the basis for our actions, it's almost a done deal before anyone even presents it to us.
Right, I think...
So if that's the desire, and that's going to be our policy from here on, to adopt that as policy, then I don't mind starting today, but I don't want three weeks from now to come up with a different set of circumstances.
Commissioners, I have a recommendation for you. I mean, you don't have to make that decision today, I think it'd be, it's nice for the applicant to know. However, we haven't run, I don't believe we have the amenities checklist, which is what you're referring to, when you looked at the other subdivision. And we could still put that together, and then we could bring that back, possibly when we have our cost estimates finished. If you're comfortable with this, go ahead and do in the cost estimates. It's really, this is today, it's partially, it's just a factor of time. And from our perspective, it's not a very large subdivision, it's not a difficult one to do. So part of it is just simply, do you want us to put it together, to spend the time to do that, and we can bring back the amenities checklist, and then from there get guidance on what your percentage split would be, if you should choose to go ahead and move forward with the district.
Didn't we in the past, though, have a number on it at the first meeting, to say with an expectation of the split being?
Yeah, I'd almost have to go back and look. I don't remember, I just know today, we don't have that amenities checklist, and to be fair with the other, when comparing against the other subdivisions, we did have that checklist when you decided. And I think one of them, you started discussing, I think it was, I think we may have deferred some time and put some time into it, but in fairness, you need to have that piece of information if you're going to be weighing a percentage that may be based on amenities or not.
One of my New Year's resolutions was to cut down on procrastination, but I think this is the time I'd like to go back to an old habit.
Well, if you're comfortable, if you're comfortable with staff going ahead and starting to do the calculation work on this, you're going to do both of those tasks concurrently. I don't think you're going to extend the time period. We can put the amenities checklist together at the same time, running the estimates on the, and reviewing the estimates on the district. But before you make a decision on establishing the district, we would want to make sure, and you'd want to make sure, that you're comfortable based on that information with what the split would be, if you should choose to go forward. I think in fairness, that might be the best approach. It's the most consistent approach.
What's the commission's consensus to do?
We still have a motion.
We have a motion, and we have an amended motion, so...
So we vote on the amendment first, then?
Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment first? All right. Do you want to restate your amendment?
The amendment to the motion was that we approved the, moving forward on the, figuring out the cost of this thing, based on a 50/50 cost, preliminary 50/50 cost breakdown.
And that was seconded.
And I seconded that.
Okay.
I thought he was coming up here. Okay. So we're moving forward on the amended motion?
And may I just add that...
And seconded?
And I would just add that the amendment, and sort of the understanding of the moving forward with, is that it's not really, it's that it's based on a range of value of housing cost, not whether it meets the checklist for amenities, because quite frankly, I think the checklist for amenities means if you don't meet the checklist for amenities, you get zero. So I think the checklist can be considered separate from what perhaps an agreed upon, does that make sense? I mean, if you don't meet the criteria of any of those amenities, you shouldn't get, you shouldn't even get 50%. It shouldn't be, if you meet, if you meet these, you get 50%. If you don't meet them, you shouldn't get any.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can't, I can't speak as much to the should part, but I know last time, you did look at that as just as far as amount. So that would be, we could, I'd have to go back when we bring the amenities and give you that framework. I don't recall off the top of my head exactly what that was, but he would be happy to do that.
But that's the intent of my amendment.
One question on the original motion. Did it have, I've forgotten, does it have a suggested split?
You had 80/20.
Dead listed.
That's right. I heard you might know there, but I believe that's right.
We need to verify that, because the amendment would be changing what the original motion already addressed.
Well, I didn't know, the original, I thought the original one did not have the percentage split.
That was my recollection, too. Shandy?
I don't have a split.
Okay, her record of it did not have the split on the original motion.
Okay.
Which is why the amendment would be applicable to address.
The physical note has a split in it.
Or it does.
Jason, or I'm sorry.
After the goals, the physical note discusses the split. So I assume that to be...
Well, in the discussion of the whole thing, you, two of you mentioned that 80/20 split ought to be there. I thought it was part of the motion.
So then are we tied into that 80/20 split? By the way, the original motion is written, even though it's not mentioned directly in the motion?
I think we want to be sure that the motion expresses the wish of the governing body when we get to the main motion. Right now, we're still unamended.
On the amended motion. Okay. Okay, we have a motion on, we have an amended motion for a 50/50 split on special assessment for Phase Two of Cedar Ridge addition. That's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, aye.
Aye.
Okay, 3-2, we'll go back to the first emotion.
And the, for clarity's sake, the first emotion, original motion does not specifically state any predetermined...
Could we have the clerk reread the motion?
She said there wasn't a split, but I thought you had 80/20.
There was a mention of it in the blue sheet, but not, so the intent is not to...
Yeah, you would need to be specific in your motion on the split. I think that's what prompted the amendment, was the motion was generic towards simply having staff, authorizing staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report, et cetera. So, Shandy, if you can reread the motion or provide that to them, that would be helpful.
The original motion?
Yes.
I had that was moved by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two of Cedar Ridge addition for future consideration by the City Commission.
So that does allow us to set any percentage from zero to 99 or 100 at a future date?
Yes, I think it would. I think I'd defer to Greg on the motion, but I took it that you're saying it's okay to work on it, and then if you'd like us, for us to bring back the amenities checklist, as we've used before, we could do that, and then you could decide at that time what the split would actually be before you would approve a district. I just want to be sure it doesn't logistically create issues, and this, again, this is a question for you. Does determining the split later create any logistic issues for staff work on the special assessment district?
No, it does not. It's a pretty simple calculation in the spreadsheet. Depending on if you have the final number and the number of lots, the split is pretty easy to calculate. The only thing is the, I don't know if that's an ordinance, is that an ordinance, Greg? The only thing is the, I don't know if that's an ordinance, is that an ordinance, Greg? I can't remember if there's an ordinance involved when you actually pass that resolution.
No, not at that stage, I don't believe.
Not at that stage, there's not. So, we could bring back the numbers with whatever, couple of different options on that, and then we can pass the resolution later. So, it would not be hard for us to give you a few options. 50/50, 75/25, I guess I didn't, 75/25, 80/20.
So, how much are we going to spend getting this ready? I mean, how much is this going to cost us to spend if we come back and say, well, we want to do 50/50, and the developer says, I don't want to do 50/50? I mean, we're just stuck with doing a bunch of work for nothing.
I think Bob Hayward, he's definitely interested in doing this subdivision, so I don't see it being wasted.
At 50%, though.
Please do.
And a mayor and commissioner, again, you know, on this percentages, I probably misunderstood on this whole thing, what's been done on some of the past to try to save the developer some money. But, you know, the paperwork that I signed, it was just to approval of special assessments for the area before I have to go into my engineering costs, because you're saying how much does it cost the city? Well, all of a sudden, I'm being told I've got to go through the engineering costs, and there was do all the engineering for the roadwork with having no idea what you, the City Commission, is going to approve for the 80/20. I was coming here with the thought that right across the street, the construction hasn't even started, and they got 80/20, that logically, my subdivision of being a similar area, a similar design, would be getting 80/20 within just a few months afterwards. I actually signed this petition back in February and was told that I'd be coming to the commission being within two to three weeks. That was a lot more than two to three weeks ago. And then now, all of a sudden, I'm hearing that, well, let's go ahead and do the feasibility report, but they need the engineering work done, so then now I'm going to have to throw in another $35,000 of my own money, and then after that, it's got to come to the commission to find out what percentage you're going to do. But I've got to sign the petition before it comes to the commission to say, I'm going to do these streets when I have no idea how it's going to be financed. You know, if it's going to be all out of my pocket, 50/50, 80/20, what it's going to be. So, I thought, we started the whole process to try to get some of the work. In other words, if the project looked like it was going to go forward like it's understood today, the commission, if nothing looks like it's going to be changing on the surface, would do an 80/20 split. But if all of a sudden things start changing all over around, that's another story. But then it's truly voted on to do that, but the developer knows, at least going into it, that it's looking like it's going to be an 80/20 split for the development. But my confusion is, is just in the last few months, the other developers that's had this process and gone through the process, that it was approved for that 80/20 split. I'm the developer that started this whole idea of the, you know, getting this street put in and everything, and all of a sudden, it's hit on me just a few months later when the other streets haven't even started, that we're going to start this 50/50 right now today. So, and I'm not saying that passed, but I need to have information before I throw another 35,000, asking what it costs the city. Well, obviously, if I know approximately, obviously, just on my, in my head, what these lots are going to cost, I mean, it's not going to, it's not a real hard thing to, you know, figure. I mean, even the city knows what some of the lots cost across the street, so for kind of a ballpark idea, I'm guessing it's not going to be too far off either way, you know, I mean, in reality. But for me to put all that money in there and not know for sure where I stand, I'm not for sure if that was the reasoning that we started this whole process. I thought it was to try to get the developers to understand where they were going before they spent the money, you know, also. And if I kind of knew where I was going, yeah, why would I back out? Because I know which direction I'm heading, I kind of have an idea of what kind of money I'm getting into and everything, and let's, let's get the wheel turning and get this thing going.
Consistency would sure help a lot, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. It's just consistency, you know, and all of a sudden, the consistency starts, you know, starts and stops within a four-month period, basically. That doesn't make sense in my mind.
I think we're, I don't think we're really being fair to Mr. Hayward, but.
Well, and I just want to say, you know, as being a relative newcomer to this, and I know I can't use that excuse forever, but I'm going to use it today. But at any rate, I really, I feel for you. I don't, I don't know that we're being very consistent with how we apply things, and I guess I would just turn to Mr. Gage and ask, how long, how long until we would, could we have some sort of policy that we can use as a guide to making these decisions? I know we've got a lot of balls in the air, so to speak, but the more I'm involved with conversations where it's like we're approaching each action as a new action, it's really frustrating, because, yeah, I feel like I'm not being consistent to you, but then, you know, it just, it just puts me in an awkward position, and I think Commissioner Davis touched upon that, too. I would really just like to have some sort of framework going forward, but I don't know how long it takes to develop something like that.
Yeah, it'll take some time. We've done a lot of homework, but I'll be honest with you, and we've had a lot, well, we've had a lot of study session discussions in the past few years. And as you recall, the evolution of specials has gone from expected at sometimes 100% on any given residential subdivision to not really interested, back to some level, and with the amenity checklist, and some of those discussions upwards of 80, between, say, 70 and 80%. So, it's been, and those have been, that's been based on the direction of the governing body. So, could staff put together a policy? Yeah, we can. We're not going to put together a policy that's going to be probably approved unanimously. I wouldn't expect that.
No, absolutely not.
My point in that is, is it will take you a lot, quite a while just to debate a policy in order to then bring it to a vote and determine where you stand, where the votes are, and then turn around and need to apply the policy after that. We have had a moratorium, I think, on more than one occasion in the last few years to try to hit certain issues. We did on the infrastructure. It was somewhat of a tailored moratorium. I'm kind of hesitant, I'd have to defer really that question to the legal counsel. I'm a little hesitant to overuse that tool, because you just shouldn't overuse the tool. And I'm not saying we can't do it here, I'm just saying that's more of a conversation you might want to have with Greg. But you are, if we do that, we will have to put some other things down, because in all past conversations, there's been a tremendous amount of data, and it's never been enough. And we will not be able to data you into a position on either side. We can't, we've talked with bankers, we've talked with everybody. So, we will not be able to do that. We will simply have to put together a policy based on the information we've had before, and at that point, we'll present it, and you'll have to decide how you want to go about discussing it, potentially debating it and voting on it. And that could, that could be quick, but I think it'll take some time. And it's up to you, then, as a governing body, on how you would like to approach that in light of this request.
Any other questions to Mr. Hayward, so he doesn't have to stand up any longer?
Sorry, I always kind of fall back to the Dr. Laura Schlessinger question. So, what's our ring in our date? I mean, would we be looking at July 1st? I mean, you know, I always have an optimistic timeline, because, you know.
If there's significant, if there are significant requests for research information that we haven't already had, it will take us multiple weeks, because right now, we're focused on many other large projects that are bigger than this project. So, that in itself means we can't take all of our time and isolate just this project and kick it out in just a few short weeks. So, I don't know the answer to that, but I think that's a factor. Another factor is, is how many times do you want to discuss it, possibly in a study session forum or any other forum? That's a factor. And then it's a factor of what happens when you come back in the meeting, so, because I do anticipate, and from our history, there are differences of opinion, and that's okay. It's just that makes it more time-consuming usually to get to the conclusion. So, I think you're, I think you're probably looking at minimally 90 to 120 days, but a lot of it has to do with how much time we have to, we're going to need to put into some of these other projects we're doing right now. That's the key.
Mr. Davis, do you have an interest in amending your motion and including?
No, the way it's written right now gives us the greatest flexibility, so I would just leave it as it is.
It's not telling the applicant anything?
Correct.
That it may just show up and be 50%.
The chips will fall where they may.
Because otherwise, we're already prejudging this. You know what I mean? If we're already going to say we're going to go 80/20, we're prejudging this thing.
I agree, and that's the reason I want to just leave it.
Well, that's why I say, there's a chance it goes 50/50.
We need to vote on the motion.
We do, but before we end debate, I would like to just mention one thing about Commissioner Hodges' request for staff to bring something back. Frankly, I think staff has done enough. I don't think there's a single thing that staff can bring back that we don't already have, and I appreciate the, many numerous times that that has come. Quite frankly, this board needs to have the political will to make things happen, and if we don't have the will to make things happen, there isn't anything that staff is going to be able to bring us. Now, I would just remind this board one thing about consistency, and that is, is that we told Stan Byquist, no, zero dollars on the last phase of his development on 14 lots over in Quail Meadows, and you know what? I think he sold every single one of those. And I think there's a house built on maybe all but two of those. So, this whole thing about being consistent, and if you say, let the free market do it, somehow it isn't going to work, I think is false, and I'll just leave it at that. So, just remember, we have been all over the board from no, zero, which has worked out, to 100%. And I don't think 50/50 is a bad place to end up on $350,000 houses.
Now, can we call a vote on the motion?
Please.
We have a motion and a second to request to authorize, or to authorize staff to prepare special assessment engineering feasibility report, or report for Phase Two of the Cedar Ridge addition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. 7.4, please.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 17-7446, expressing support for the Flint Hills Holdings Group's application for low-income housing tax credit to redevelop Phase One of the Lee Buildings located at 254 North Santa Fe Avenue.
Mr. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In general, requests for resolutions of support for low-income housing tax credits are a recurring item on your agenda over the years, and I'll try to provide a brief summary, but feel free to follow up in greater detail if you have additional questions. The Kansas Housing Resources Corporation administers and allocates federal tax credits for the state of Kansas. In 2016, they administered approximately $1.5 million of tax credits. It is a competitive application-based process, and so one of the steps in that process for a applicant or a developer is a requirement that the communities in which they propose a project provide a resolution of support, supporting their proposed project and application. And so, it's really a two-step process. There's application and reservations potentially made for those tax credits, and then allocations. The application deadline was February 5th of this year for the initial round of applications. Flint Hills Holdings Group has applied for tax credits for the Lee Buildings in Salina, recognizing that between that initial submission date of February 5th of this year and the reservation action that the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation would take in May of 2017, they would need a resolution of support to be submitted, approved by us and submitted to keep their application active with Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. With respect to the proposed redevelopment of the Lee Buildings, Flint Hills Holding Group has proposed Phase One, 53 rental units, five of those being efficiency, 31 one-bedroom, or 39 one-bedroom apartments, five two-bedroom, four three-bedroom, and 25% of those total units being market rate, with the remainder being income-qualified in some fashion. You may be familiar with Flint Hills Holding Group and what they've done in the past. We've discussed their project approximately a year ago, as we considered a similar request. But they specialize in innovative real estate development. We, staff's attached some pictures of the Polar Loft redevelopment in Lawrence that's representative of redevelopment of a historic building in a similar fashion to what they have in mind here in Salina. As I mentioned, there are application requirements and selection criteria that would be administered by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, so there's no guarantee that they'll ultimately be awarded the tax credits. Our community support is just a function of, or one of the required elements of a competitive application. So, with that, the redevelopment of the Lee Building can be considered to be consistent with our strategic plan, in that we've said we want the community to be thriving economically and socially, we want it clean, attractive, and inviting, quality of life that appeals to residents and visitors, we want to balance growth in the community, we want to have the highest quality services within available resources, we want downtown to be a thriving and vibrant place, we want to be respectful of our heritage. And additionally, the goals in our strategic plan include a mixed-use development, high-quality services, and maintaining a commitment to making the downtown thriving. As far as the fiscal note, at this time, passage of the resolution of support would not represent any financial commitment on our part. However, I would note that as we go forward, there is a potential of a financial gap that would require additional funding to make the project viable. Possible ways to address that are neighborhood revitalization program, tax rebates, and that may involve amending or considering amending the NRA program to extend the duration of the tax rebates, as well as increase the percentage of rebates. And then we do need to have conversations about the possibility of some other form of economic development financing to assist in an identified financial gap for the project. So, passage of the resolution of support does not represent a binding commitment on either one of those action items. Those would have to be taken up in the very near future. The reason for the request today is trying to keep things in order in terms of providing the required elements to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation in a timely manner so that the application stays under consideration by the Housing Resources Corporation. The applicants here are prepared to provide some additional detail for you and answer any questions. With respect to options, staff's identified three options. I think they're pretty straightforward. One is to approve the resolution as presented. The second option is to postpone consideration to a specified later date and provide staff or the applicant guidance on additional information you'd like as you consider that in the future. The third item would be to deny approval of the resolution, thereby showing no support for the project and rendering it ineligible for Kansas Housing Resources Corporation consideration. Due to the February submission deadline and the upcoming reservation date and the request of the applicant, staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution of support, recognizing we've got more work to do as it relates to the NRA as well as the financial gap. Having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and then, as I mentioned, representatives of the applicant are here to speak to their project as well.
I love the picture with the horses out in front. I wonder how old that picture is?
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Gillum, and I'm the Vice President of Development and a partner with Overland Property Group, and with me today is Tony Kriznik, who's the managing partner for Flint Hills Holdings. We're actually two separate companies, believe it or not, we're actually competitors. Somehow, we've become friends, but we are co-applicants on this to the state of Kansas and Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. Fairly unique, actually extremely unique, that you have two competing companies that have agreed to team up on a project, and this project needs the team up, as we'll kind of talk about here. But if we could just roll to the next slide. So, really wanted to talk real briefly about both of our companies and why this made sense. You're probably familiar with our name, Overland Property Group. We've done a few things around Salina, and all of us, four partners, are all from Salina, so we've done a lot of stuff outside Salina. Actually, our business got started in 2004 here in Salina, and since then, we've developed right around 2,400 apartment units across the Midwest. Here in Salina, we have the Reserves at Prairie Glen, the Heritage at Hawthorne. Both were new construction, different phases over time. The Heritage at Hawthorne just finished up last summer and leased up very quickly, so we're very familiar with the Salina market, have a lot of roots here, have an office here with three employees. So, Salina's home for us and something we're very interested in seeing revitalized and done. With the interest in downtown and seeing that being revitalized, we really look to a building that we've had our eyes on for quite a number of years, being the Lee Building, and a partnership with Tony and Flint Hills Holdings made a lot of sense. and a partnership with Tony and Flint Hills Holdings made a lot of sense. But one of the things that we have in our background is an award-winning development portfolio. This particular development you see here was one that we finished up late 2014. This is the Tabor Grand Hotel Apartments, and it's in Leadville, Colorado, just south of Vail. Leadville's kind of a working-population town. You get a lot of people that work at the different resorts, or work in the mine, or work in the service sector, and commute in because of the affordability factor in the mountains. Just as a side note, we're actually finishing up the Reserves at Steamboat Springs. So, affordable housing is needed everywhere across this country, and it's never been more so than now. This particular project, being a 130-year-old building, has seen the ups and downs over the years. Back when Doc Holliday used to stay there and live there, to standing presence of the United States, the silver dollar was unveiled on the roof of this hotel to the entire population. But at one point in time, this was the most innovative hotel west of the Mississippi. At one point in time after that, it was looked to be scraped and turned into a parking lot. So, it's seen the best of times and the worst of times. And the reason I bring that story up is because repurposing buildings that should be saved is a really important thing that we've seen a need for. And this particular building, I think, meets it probably more than most, just because of the history behind it. Some people may be aware of, you've heard of the Unsinkable Molly Brown. That's where this story gets its roots from, is this particular building here. Baby Doe Tabor, so the Tabor family, which is really rich in history in the Denver area. That little box you see there on the left-hand side of that picture is the Baby Doe box. She would sit up in that box and look down the street towards the mine, so she could see her husband walk home, and talk about a rags-to-riches story, and that is one for the ages. So, that building, we took, invested quite a bit of money in it, turned it into 37 affordable housing units, won numerous national awards with it. And I think today, it is a test of time as far as a building and how it should be renovated, not scraped, should be saved. So, we're very proud of that one, and we're recognized pretty highly for it. So, if we could roll to the next. Again, just kind of talking about the different awards, these are kind of across our entire development portfolio. But you see the governor up there in the upper right-hand corner. He did a pretty long documentary on this building and talking about how he, when he was growing up in Colorado, how he'd drive by that building and see that. And as we told him, and as I sat down, he kind of asked questions about how we did this, I said, you know, we're stewards of the building for this period of time. That building is going to outlive all of us, and the memory lives in too many people's minds for it to be owned by one person. Again, the Lee Building, I think, is that same thing for a lot of people in Salina, growing up, knowing the history that's there, another rags-to-riches story that needs to be preserved. So, we could roll to the next one. So, again, Tony and Flint Hills Holding has a lot of the same type of history. They're a relatively new company, but has seen a tremendous amount of success, and that success is really related to his style of development and how he is detail-oriented for the right thing, the right reasons. And Tony's really specialized in saving buildings. So, you guys are familiar with the East Lawrence area, where the Polar Lofts are in the Warehouse Arts District. That Polar Lofts has really kick-started that entire area into redevelopment. I just had lunch with Tony a couple of weeks ago at a new restaurant that's popped up down there. It's truly unbelievable to see how quickly that entire area has started renovation based on this housing. So, you know, great-looking product there, but he's also got quite a handful of award-winning type properties like this. So, if we could roll to the next one. So, again, just a short list of all the awards Tony's received in about the last four years, which is quite substantial. So, bringing us to the Lee Building, the reason our two competing companies have teamed up to tackle such a large project, because it is such a large project. Just to quickly talk about where the Lee Building is, we're obviously very familiar, being from Salina, and what we've had a role in is what's about to happen in downtown, and we want to be a part of it. We think the housing need in downtown is very great. Just from kind of people talking, I've had so many individuals approach me and say, hey, wait, you guys are going to be involved with doing that Lee Building, right? Just to hear the young professionals in this town get excited about something like that, and the potential for a building like that, and how that housing aspect in downtown is missing and greatly needed. So, if we could roll to the next one. Again, just kind of talking, our plan and how all of this plays into effect is, this is an extremely large project. If we did it all at once, it would be foolish for anyone to do. You jeopardize the entire development by biting off too much. So, what we have done is put in an application to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for affordable housing tax credits, a financing mechanism, to do that north building. We believe that is kind of the kickstart to this entire redevelopment. But we have applied for 53 apartment units, and these are, as was read off, studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units. And we have also sprinkled in about 25% of those units being market rate or conventionally financed. And I want to warn you, because as we progress these discussions, there is some misinformation out there. I was actually in Washington, DC about two weeks ago, talking to Senator Jerry Moran about this, and why Western Kansas has not seen housing developed. And it's because market-rate housing does not mean money. In reality, market-rate housing is harder to finance and darn near impossible to finance, purely because the rents are not high enough in this area of the country to sustain market-rate housing. What we would build in a metropolitan community like a Manhattan, or a Lawrence, or a Kansas City, the rent that we have to charge there to sustain that is not attainable in Salina. So, affordable housing is one of the best financing mechanisms we have to get housing done in a community. Sprinkling that market-rate housing in, that balance between market rate and affordable housing is extremely delicate, and you want to make sure to manage that, so you're not over-leveraging one side or under-leveraging the other. It's a very, very delicate balance. So, if we could roll to the next. This is currently how the Lee Building sits. It's ripe for this redevelopment, and as you can see, it's definitely seen its better days. But the potential of these buildings is unbelievably good. The risk is also unbelievable. So, again, this financing mechanism is an important part to our process here. So, to really finish up, this is the first step of a flight of stairs for all of us together. We have the application into the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. It is one of about more than 50 that is in there, which this is the most applications they've ever had, if that tells you anything about the demand and need for affordable housing. We feel that our two companies together have the greatest chance of being successful and getting an allocation. Now, I don't know what that means this year, because it is so competitive. It's competitive every year, but this is kind of another level. But this resolution of support is simply telling the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, we need affordable housing in downtown Salina, and specifically in the Lee Building. At this point, that is, all this resolution of support is staying. So, as we get then further into this, if we have been approved for these affordable housing tax credits, we will move on to the next steps to securing and making this development a reality. But again, you know, this is first stair, step one, in moving on up that flight of stairs and making this a reality. So, again, myself, Matt, and Tony are both available to answer any questions any of you might have.
When would you expect the approval, if you receive it?
We believe, you know, it kind of is a moving date every year. There's not an actual hard date, but it's typically middle of May to the 1st of June. We had the Director of Kansas Housing in town last week, and toured him through the building, met with the Salina Downtown, Inc. Corporation, and really talked about the redevelopment plans there, trying to make sure that they understood what this type of housing would help do to the rest of the plan downtown, and make sure that he understood the synergy that is going on right now. So, we're very hopeful that we'll hear positively before June 1st.
Any other questions?
Just one, during the interim between development of the north and the south building, is any cosmetic work done to the south building, or that space in between them?
So, the north building will obviously have 100% done, you know, new roof, tuck pointing on the brick, it'll be completely renovated. Now, the breezeway in between the two is something that, as we expand further and start studying what it is going to take fully, and that's kind of all in process right now, that'll all be hammered out. But the way affordable housing tax credits work, we cannot use that for another building, unless that building is being used for tax credits. So, there is a pretty delicate balance we can use on that. But again, this being such a large undertaking, we really have to get that first building going before any of us are confident that, you know, we can start doing some work to building two or three. But we would hope to, no matter what's done, it won't sit there and you're in Phase One thinking, oh, my gosh, Phase Two just looks awful. It'll be clean, neat, and safe, so.
Just thinking of people having to walk past the other two buildings to get to what I hope will be a nice, vibrant, beautiful downtown during those couple of years in between.
Right. And the reason we picked the north building was purely because of, again, this entire project is a huge undertaking, so, you know, why reach for the apple at the very top of the tree when you've got an apple that is mid-level and able to reach? The north building is in the best condition out of all of them by far. The other side of Tower is lesser condition, it's got some bowed floors, and it's going to take substantially more work to get done. But again, getting one done, the synergy in that entire building is going to be greater. So, you know, second building, you know, the uses expand with the amount of housing that's there. So, it won't be something that'll be an eyesore, even if it takes a few years to get done, though.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't have any questions, because we've actually passed a resolution of support on this before. The terms were a little bit different. I think they were 90/10, or whatever. And that was following a field trip that we took, several of us took. I don't know if anybody on this board took it. But anyways, to Lawrence to view that thing. So, I just have a couple of comments. One, Matt and Tony, I really appreciate the presentation. It was very professionally done. It's, we appreciate the work and time you've put into this, and that you're both working together. And Tony, I just want to say personally, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you kind of knew what our market rate and low-income rates were, and desires, and everything else. And I just really appreciate that you considered those and have done everything you could possibly do to get expanded further than what we did last time. But just that you did that is, you definitely have my support. I mean, I really hope that this thing happens this time, and if whatever arrangements we need to make as it goes forward, I'm sure staff is capable and willing to, you know, make some of those things happen.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and all Commissioners, but specifically Commissioner Blanchard. First of all, I apologize about my appearance. We were going through old buildings in Kansas City all day, running a little bit late here. But yeah, I mean, you know, the conversations that we had in Lawrence, and then afterwards, you know, I got the message that you all sent me a couple of years back, and we went back to the drawing board, and we took a close look at the market study, and we understood that more market-rate housing was important to you all, and it's important to us. I think I made a comment, you know, a few weeks ago, said, shoot, I wish we could do all market-rate housing. But again, due to rent restrictions and really market feasibility, that's just not feasible, especially out here, a little bit outside of the big city. So, yeah, we were able to come up with something that we think is going to work well for everybody, mixed-income approach, 75/25. I think it's also important to note that this is also going to be a mixed-use approach. And, you know, if you would allow me to speculate down the road, when all three of these buildings are completed, I'd say that, you know, from an attraction and retention standpoint, we're talking about potentially hundreds of citizens and dozens and dozens of jobs. If the Warehouse Arts District in Lawrence is any indication, I think we now have probably 40 or 50 permanent jobs there in an area where four or five years ago only had a handful. So, the catalytic effects can, and I believe will, be drastic on this project.
Thank you both for referring to it as affordable housing and not low-income housing. I know the state probably does that, but thank you for that public comment.
Judy Larson, 2130 East Crawford. Last time someone from your Overland was here about the Lee Building. They were talking about how this would be an appropriate area for seniors. But then they were talking about income restrictions starting at $30,000. I can tell you, your clientele of seniors with an income of $30,000 is delusional. And I think you need to pay more attention to the people that you're targeting, because most people on social security or on limited fixed income don't meet that criteria. And so, your base of tenants is going to be restricted severely. So, I think you need to take a more realistic view of your target audience and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
If I may respond, and I know that that was targeted a little bit more towards Matt than myself, but really appreciate the comment. As you can imagine, we've dealt with comments like this in the past. I was actually at the meetings, and I believe that you made the same comment in the other room a few weeks ago. To clarify, the affordable housing is up to $30,000. So, we have a full gamut. This project's the epitome of something for everybody, and I believe in this project. We actually have some units that start at 30% of the area median income, go all the way up to 60% of the area median income, so within that range for, again, affordable housing, Ms. Mayor. And that high end of the range is up to $30,000. The second thing that I would say is, this is not a senior project. Everybody is welcome. So, you know, we're going to see a lot of young professionals, we're going to see a lot of families. Hopefully, we're going to see a lot of seniors that want to continue on with that vibrancy and see the Lee Building brought back to what it was when they were kids. But just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying this. This is not a senior development. We are not targeting people that make $30,000 or more. We're providing something for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, bring that to the Commission for Action.
Madam Mayor, I move that we issue a resolution of support for Flint Hills Holding Group's application for low-income housing tax credits to redevelop Phase One of the Lee Buildings located at 254 North Santa Fe Avenue.
It moved and seconded to approve Resolution 177446. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign? Okay. Thank you very much. That was a very good presentation. Appreciate it. 7.5.
Item 7.5, Consider the First Amendment to Agreement with Federal Signal Safety and Security Systems to Address the Discounted Purchase of Two Additional Sirens and to Accept the Revised Preliminary Siren Coverage Map.
Okay, Mr. Gage.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioners, I think I have pretty good news for you here. As you recall, back in November of 16, I think four of you were here, we entered into an agreement with Federal Signal Safety and Security Systems, which I'll just refer as Federal Signal, to replace our aging outdoor warning system. And we talked about how some of our sirens were pushing 50 years old, and how the system was becoming pretty, very unreliable. At that time, the total project cost was at $200,257.10. The scope entailed five new sirens. The 2001-130 specification from Federal Signal, which is a mechanical rotating siren, included new poles, solar power, and a visual alert option. The proposal also included reusing five of the city's same-specification sirens that were not purchased that long ago, were very reliable, have many, many years left, and mixing that in, both to ensure reliability and create an affordable approach. I would think that was a good approach. In trying to meet the required coverage area, and that area is determined by, the guideline you use is from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. They put out a document called, it's Technical Bulletin 2.0. It was determined that two additional sirens would be required to fully meet the city's coverage over the city's contiguous boundaries, and also, we had in there a 1,000-foot buffer along the east development side, east side development area of our community. The point in the east side was not necessarily to provide rural coverage, but the point was, is that if at some point a subdivision is approved in that area, you wouldn't immediately be faced with possibly having to add a $25,000, $30,000 siren. At that point in time, there'd be some buffer, so hopefully, it'll save you some dollars in the future. And so, in reviewing that, we determined that there needed to be some modifications to the coverage map, and you're aware of that. And we were very strict about having a full area covered that we just mentioned. And we were very strict about having a full covered, full-area cover that we just mentioned. As a result, staff has been working with Federal Signal to customize an efficient approach, which now results in addition of two additional sirens. And as we talked about that, one of the things that they would like us to do, and we think is very easy to accelerate the process from this point forward, is to have someone from Public Works that can work with them on the final siding and permitting to move it a little faster. We do want to do that because those locations, we emphasize, they don't have to be, but we emphasize those being on public property and right-of-way, because you have more control and access there. However, there are obstructions there. The original agreement called for a final completion date of April 1st. We passed that, I can say, and that's, the reason is, is because of the time taken to address the coverage gaps. But efforts have been put in place to respond to that and fix that and be responsive to our needs. If we, when we look at that, when we talk about accelerating, we are in a position at this point that once, and what we have, and we'll talk about this map real quick, but if the map is accepted and the amendment, this First Amendment to the Agreement with Federal Signal is approved, then what will happen is, is they'll immediately be able to install the sirens in locations that aren't going to move. And then, the next step will be to take the existing sirens of the city that we're going to reuse and put those in place once those other sites are certified and approved. And then, by that time, we would expect the two new sirens to be received from being on order in the next three weeks or so, and those sirens will be put in last. In the meantime, in order to ensure coverage, the existing sirens, especially ones we wouldn't want to keep, we'll work with them to try to keep those in operating condition, and those will still be activated until the new system is in place. So, we hopefully can provide a bridge to the coverage need that we have there. The original project budget was $515,000. It was based on a system that had other features that in the end, we decided, I think you decided, and staff agreed, were not necessary for the difference in cost. If it was a closer cost, that'd be a different story. And so, that's why we ended up at the $200,257 number. One of the things, too, is that that cost included, for each of those sirens, all the equipment, all the labor, and so does this, for these two additional sirens, all costs for the equipment, the labor, the AC/DC power, solar battery backup system, the LED red visual alert option as well, which you're going to find, we may be the only one in the state that's going to have that. I can't recall, but we're one of the early ones, for sure. And that's going to be a visual as well as an audio alarm, which we really believe is beneficial, quite honestly, not just for those who might have hearing disabilities, but at nighttime, because these sirens are not, have never been intended to be heard inside, even though many people can hear them in their homes during certain conditions. But that light, we feel, will be advantageous. It also includes turnkey installation, user training, disposal of existing unwanted siren system components. And I wanted to make clarification, too. We do have in the RFP, which became part of the agreement, a requirement for testing. And we weren't aware at the time that the actual, once you get all the pieces in place, the actual infield audio testing was not typical for the industry. The reason for that is because the conditions can change on any given day or hour of the day or time of day. And also, the issue is, if you're there, everything's in place. It is a tremendous effort to have to move and change everything out once it's permanently put in place. And so, when we looked at that and looked at our language, we felt that our language could be interpreted also to simply require the testing of the actual equipment to make sure it works properly before it's put in use. And certainly, that, we do have to have that, so that's also in there. So, the change order is a total of $18,937.20 associated with this amended agreement. That means that each siren is roughly half that, a little over, about $9,400-$9,500, which is a significant discount from what it would be originally, and you know that from doing the math on the original. So, we're pretty thankful for Federal Signal working with us in that way. I think that's beneficial. With that, I won't spend much time on the conformance with the comprehensive plan. Actually, I should say the strategic plan. It's an error from the last report. But anyway, it still complies with the strategic plan. We think it'll give us good coverage for 30 years. We do have option to approve the First Amendment to Agreement or not. I do want to take you to the map. It's going to be a little difficult for you to see. Right there, I'm going to, I may have to just narrate, because even with the light off, it's a little bit difficult for you to see those boundaries. But let me pull it up here. I'll just narrate, and you may be able to see it, you may not be able to from there. That map has a, well, there you go. Thank you, John. Has a black line. The black line is the city limit line. The sort of purplish line is a 100, or 1,000-foot buffer. That 1,000-foot buffer shows all the way around, just simply because the GIS computer system puts it all the way around. We're only interested in that on the east side of town, from North Street down to South Ninth Street. That's really where our growth area would be, and that was the purpose behind that in the first place. So, the rest doesn't matter. But if you look up at the very, very north end, I'll explain the colors for you. The red circle is a 90-decibel level. The yellow circle is an 80-decibel level, and a green, which would be a circle if it was a single siren, not intermixed, is a 70-decibel level. For most of the area in our community, you're going to want a 70-plus decibel level. As you look at the very north tip, you will see the green line does cross just a little below the black line, just a little below the city limit line. That's not an area where the buffer is of issue. But when you do look at that, that's the very, very northern tip. It's very, actually, it's pretty far from any development, and I believe that's an agricultural area. And when you look at that, it would meet the FEMA standard for being just less than 70, and it would barely be less. And quite honestly, on any given day, depending on the wind, you may get 70-plus decibels. It's really that close. So, from a staff perspective, we're not too worried about that. It's not an area you'd expect to plop a subdivision down anytime soon at all, either. As we move around to the east, you will see, let's see, on that map, yeah. John, if you can actually go up a little bit higher, right, just a little bit higher, right there, you see the funny shape towards the upper center, a little bit to the left of center. You'll notice the green line doesn't catch the, it does catch the city limit line, it doesn't catch the buffer. That's okay. That's a little north of our buffer area. But the important thing there is that that is fully covered, and that was one of the things that we wanted to point out that was important before. As we pull on around to the east, I'm going to take you below North Street. Actually, I think as we look along, as you follow the line, the green line along the east side is really, really pretty good when you go south of North Street, as it should be. We're going to go to the southeastern portion of the community in the Magnolia area. So, yeah, there we go. Little bit lower, there we go, right there. You will see a little bit of the green jut up and just kind of hit the black line, which means it doesn't quite, you can see the portion, a portion of the buffer area is not covered right there. So, we have a real small area right there. That does stand out. It does, we do have the city limit covered. Again, that's a pretty tight area. It's difficult to tell if it would or wouldn't cover on any given day, but that is still a gap in a 1,000-foot buffer. It's up to you to determine how important you think that is. It doesn't affect developed area right now. It is, it would be just south of the Highland Meadows-Hamlet area and near, pretty close to the city's soccer complex. Actually, I believe that's more soccer complex. It looks like it is more the south of the soccer complex in Highland Meadows-Hamlet. But it is just a small buffer area. And then, finally, if we can go down a little further south, we do, you can see in the city limit line, the green does cross that little black box just a little bit on the tip. That is an undeveloped area. Technically, we were asking for the full coverage. Again, that's an undeveloped area. So, from the FEMA bulletin standard, we do presume that it does probably meet the coverage. It wouldn't necessarily give you 70, although in the city limit area, it may be very close because it's such a small area. Any given day, it could. The buffer, it probably wouldn't, and the buffer area would probably drop into the high 60-decibel a little bit there. So, it's not, it's one of those areas you can look at and decide, is it, how important is it? Again, it's not an area in which we have a development waiting to happen. It's going to be quite a few years, I believe, before that would develop and before you would even have to be concerned with the sirens. So, part of the goal of the buffer was to try to put off an immediate cost if we had a new subdivision there. I don't think we're affected by that. That would be my opinion on that. And then, as you come down to Ninth Street, you're in pretty good shape. It looks like, other than that area, it's pretty good. So, the other final location that was of concern was over towards the airport, and there was an area that had some industrial development and also had the county road and bridge facility that is covered. We will need, on final location, we need to make sure that the FAA is in agreement with that siren location. But the point was not to cover the whole airport, because it is not necessary for us to do that, but to cover the developed area of the airport. And so, we do have that, they do have that covered. So, I think we're in pretty good shape there. Bernie Botson, who works, has been our project manager and great assistants, working for Slayne County Emergency Management, and I will, Bernie, if you have anything else to share on the map or any other aspects, please do so.
Bernie Botson, Deputy Director of Slayne County Emergency Management. I spoke with Federal and Blue Valley, our vendor, in reference to the siren number 12 is definitely going to have to move. The Federal Aviation Administration will take great umbrage to putting a siren right next to an active runway. So, once I explained that we weren't necessarily looking for 100% coverage of the airfield, because nobody would hear it anyway in an aircraft, they can just move that siren down to where road and bridge is. There's a transformer, I checked today, and that would, you know, that would fill our intent of protecting the industrial area, county road and bridge, and that kind of stuff. That was the only blatant, you know, problem that I saw with the plan here. So, that's kind of an easy fix, as long as you're willing to forego the 70 dB coverage on the active runways and that kind of stuff. The terminal and all that stuff will be covered with the other sirens.
Does it have any effect on the land that's to the north of that, the undeveloped?
I don't believe it will. Could you just scroll to the north just a little bit, please? I think we should be okay there if we move it a little bit, but, you know, I really won't. If you look at the green line, it's pretty far outside the city limit at that point. But without seeing the actual model, I wouldn't know.
Okay. Any questions?
Just real quick, the action, if you accept this, would be to accept this as a preliminary map. And as I mentioned, the reason is, is because they'll have to look at each specific site. We know that siren at the airport will move, but on the others, they'll look in the right-of-way, look for obstructions. So, they could move, could move a few feet, could move 100 feet. But then, what will, what will happen is, is staff will assign someone to them so we can accelerate this. We don't want to wait. We want to get this in as soon as possible. So, we will have somebody at their hip in order to get these permitted as quickly as possible. And then, we'll need to have a final map that will certify provides the same coverage area, so we don't end up with a gap that we didn't anticipate. So, that would be how this would work. And then, your agreement would approve the purchase of the two additional sirens. The one other thing I didn't mention was the landfill. The response was, they responded to our contiguous city limits. This does not cover the landfill, and part of this would be to agree that, we believe, the staff believes, we need to figure out something. But the landfill has activity that moves around and cells move and so forth, so just setting a siren doesn't really help you long-term. We need to come up with something else rather than put that on Federal Signal. That's, I think, on us to figure out what we need to do long-term for the landfill. So, we will do that, and that's why that's not on your map today. So, with that, take any other questions you might have or action.
Mayor, I had a comment as well, if I may, at some point.
Sure.
I was just going to explain, as you can tell, there are quite a number of things coming together on this project, and I apologize particularly to the city manager. He had the draft agreement available to him at the same time you all did, so he has absolute, total deniability about its content.
[laughing]
But we were all coming together, and now that we have the map, and there are a few more details to work out in terms of the document, but it is currently drafted and will be, of course, absolutely consistently with what the city manager has presented. And if, it might be one of those cases where we need to have your authorization as substantially the form is presented, if that's acceptable in order to keep things moving.
Just one question. Reading this, if it's determined next week that a third additional siren is needed, it's still at the same $9,000 price, correct?
Yeah, that's.
Is it not necessarily limited to two, but whatever number is deemed?
That's the intent. We can make sure that the language is crystal clear on that, that if it would take more than two, that the same unit price is in place. Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Public comment?
Randall Holm, 848 Custer, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. One question. You had talked, and I was a little confused as to what kind of decibel coverage would be, is anticipated for the soccer field area south of Salina. It sounded like it was a little questionable whether that it'd be at 70 decibels or not.
Yeah, I think at this point, based on the map, all the active use area will be at 70 decibels. There's some unused land that's owned by the city as part of that, that on any given day would be very close, but may not or might be. A lot of it depends on, really depends on the storm and the winds and a lot of other factors. But I think the active use area is pretty well-covered there.
Just having seen the scramble to get out of the Bill Burke area, I think it's very important we have as early a notice at all at any of the sports fields.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Any other public comment? Okay. Bring it back to the Commission.
And I move we approve the First Amendment to Agreement with Federal Signal Safety and Security Systems to address the discounted purchase of two additional sirens and to accept the revised preliminary siren coverage map.
You have a motion?
Mayor, may I ask that that motion clarify that the approval of the agreement wasn't substantially the form presented? It will require some tweaking, I'm sure.
I'd agree with that addition, if that's an acceptable statement.
And the second does as well.
And the second? Okay. Motion and a second. To approve the First Amendment to Agreement with Federal Signal Safety and Security Systems. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I'd like to thank the staff for getting that resolved soon, since we are in the season now. Thank you.
We are, and we would have liked to have this ready by April 1st, but Bernie's and Hannah over at Emergency Management are doing a really good job trying to keep our system going while this happens. And when we have it, we'll be happy that we have a good new system that gives us wonderful coverage, and hopefully for the next about 30 years or so, 20 to 30 years.
Okay. Item 8.1.
Item 8.1, Application Number Z16-6A, requesting an amendment of Article 10, signs in Chapter 42 of the Salina Code. 8.1A, first reading ordinance number 17-10882.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This was an item that was covered in a steady session, so we'll try not to plow over old ground, but the, I wanted to give you just an overview, the genesis of the text amendment, which was initiated by the Planning Commission, was after a steady session that the staff had with the Planning Commission, giving an overview of a U.S. Supreme Court decision in Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona. And in that case, the Supreme Court found that, with few exceptions, sign regulations cannot vary based on the type of information a sign conveys. And currently, the city of Salina's sign regulations do vary by the information that the sign conveys, and it varies by functional categories such as political signs, non-commercial opinion signs, real estate signs, general advertising signs. And so, the intent of the proposed amendment is to maintain as close as possible the temporary sign allowance that is currently allowed in our various zoning districts, but to regulate signs by their physical characteristics instead of what they say. In other words, to regulate them by their structural type instead of by their function. And one example of that is try to move towards the term of temporary freestanding yard signs as opposed to what the information the sign conveys. And so, one of the guiding principles out of that case is that if city staff or commissioners have to read a sign to determine if it's allowed, that is drifting towards regulating by content, and that's what we want to avoid. So, John, if you could go to the summary of proposed changes, please. And I think the best or easiest way to go through this is to just kind of summarize the changes and the things that are subject to the city commission's discretion and were subject to the Planning Commission's discretion. And if we look at an individual, typical individual residential lot, what this amendment does is it gives that lot a base allocation of up to two temporary yard signs, up to eight square feet in size and six feet in height. And then, it creates two exceptions for signs that can contain what we construe to be commercial messages. And one of those is for property that's for sale or rent. It allows one additional sign per street frontage, and I do want to emphasize that right here so that if the Planning Commission's approach was not one additional sign per property, but one additional sign per street frontage, so if you had a lot that fronted, front to back on two streets or a corner lot, that would be additional signage. And then for, when a garage sale or public was invited to an open house, that would also allow for one additional sign per street frontage. Those were exceptions to the general prohibition on signs with commercial messages in residential zones. And there were three areas where the Planning Commission did not feel that an exception could be justified, and those were the for-sale or open-house sign that is located off premises where that was occurring. The off-premise sign that would alert people to a, or direct people to a garage sale located off the premises where that was occurring. And the third category that they could not find justification for an exception was what we refer to as a construction or contractor sign that would tell, be on a residential lot, but tell people about a construction activity or contractor that was doing work on the site. So, those three additional exceptions were considered under that category for additional signs, but the Planning Commission could not find a substantial government interest for allowing those types of commercial message signs, but not other ones. And we can touch on that a little later, because if the city commission disagrees with that, that's something that you could work with staff and the legal counsel to try to justify those exceptions. The other exception is during an election period, it would allow up to four additional yard signs per property. And as we discussed, those do not have to be used to promote a candidate or campaign, but during that election season, there would be an allowance for additional signage. And of course, we now have only a fall election season, but we also have a primary season. And so, the draft ordinance as before you would allow signs to be put up for 40, 45 days prior to an election and have to be removed at least within seven days after. And so, the current election calendar is for, June 17th would be 45 days before the August 1 primary, and then you would have a period where signs would need to be removed. And then from September 24 through November 1 would be the 45 days before an election. But as drafted and recommended by the Planning Commission, there would be a period where there would be an expectation that the additional signs would be removed from the property. That doesn't mean that you couldn't use the two base signs that you get year-round for some political or campaign purpose. So, the other thing with all the different math with the add-ons and anything to help with code enforcement, is that they determine that at any one time, that should you drive by a residential lot, they should have never more than six individual yard signs in their yard, and as is current practice and would be the recommendation here, is that no permits would be required for those types of signs. The general approach is the same with non-residential lots, except for the maximum sign size is larger to accommodate the commercial setting, and the height is the same at six feet. In a commercial or non-residential setting, we would allow for construction signs because commercial message signs are allowed on those non-residential lots, and we would also have the allowance for four additional signs per property. No sign permits would be required for these types of lots. So, I believe if you've gone around town and seen some of the school projects, many of them have a construction sign out front that tells you who the architect and engineer and contractor, and that's paid for by your local taxes, and so those would continue to be permitted on those construction sites, as long as there was an active building permit there. When construction activity ceased, the sign should be removed within seven days. On the commercial side, there was also some consideration given to requests from local businesses to have what we refer to as feather flags or wind flags that would be placed out front. The Planning Commission had a lot of dialogue with local businesses, and there was agreement across the board on these ground rules, that there would be, no flag would exceed 13 feet in height. You could have up to six flags per street frontage, but if you had a narrower lot, your flag allowance would be based on your frontage. They can only be displayed for 30 days, and they must be securely anchored to the ground, and they must be removed if they become tattered or torn, and they absolutely cannot be placed in the public right-of-way. There's also a change that was made to clarify and allow for inflatable sign, which is generally inflated by some wind-powered device that gives the appearance of movement, and so those are allowed with a height up to 20 feet. The minimum setback has to be equal to the height of the sign. They can't be up for more than 14 days. They have to be removed if they become tattered or torn. And the sign regulations also address banners. These have been pretty consistent since original adoption, and banners that are set out on stakes or tied to trees or out in the public right-of-way are not permitted. They need to be attached to a solid wall, solid fence, or over a sign face due to wind concerns. No permit is required, but they do count towards the total sign allocation. So, every once in a while, the speakeasy location on South Ohio would be a good and a bad example. It's a good example from the standpoint that they anchor all their banners to their fence and to the wall of their building. It's a bad example because sometimes they put up so many banners that it exceeds their allowable sign allocation. So, if they have too many banners that cover too much area, they have to remove some of them, but they do properly anchor them to the fence and to the building. The last category is a mobile or portable sign, and this is the sign that's generally got, sometimes they're plugged in, sometimes they're not, but they usually have changeable letters and are set on a metal base, and they're temporarily set on a property. Those are currently allowed on properties only if they don't have an existing pole or ground sign. And a permit is required, and there's a time limit on those. These are becoming more and more rare with the movement towards electronic changeable copy signs. There's less of a need for these types of portable signs. So, that is kind of a basic overview of the text amendment. John, we do have some graphic illustrations, correct?
Yes.
So, I was just going to walk through this. This is what we would consider to be a for-sale or rent sign. This sign falls within the eight-square-foot and six-square-foot parameter, so this would be a permitted for-sale or rent sign that could be on a residential or a non-residential lot.
Quick question on that. If on the bottom of that sign says, "Open House Today," that counts towards the square footage?
It does count towards the sign area, yes.
Okay.
So, in a way, we measure height would be to the top of this support here. So, this, if we're guessing that the gentleman's six feet tall, then this sign would fall within that parameter. This is a similar sign that also would fall within those same parameters. This type of sign is the most typical temporary yard sign that you find. This would be a permitted sign on any type of lot. What is not permitted in this particular picture is that it's in the public right-of-way, and after we took the picture, we moved it. The next sign, again, this would be considered as a for, property for sale or rent sign, and that's more the temporary yard sign type category, but that would be permitted on any lot without a permit. Same with this type of sign. That's not a commercial message sign. It's a non-commercial message. If a property or homeowner chose to display that in their front yard, that would be permissible under this text amendment. This is an example of a not permissible banner sign because it's set out banner on stakes and not affixed to a wall or existing sign face. These, again, would be, would be considered permissible temporary yard signs. Again, these are not permissible because those are located in the right-of-way. But if a commercial business wanted to put out two of those signs, they could, but they can't be placed in the public right-of-way.
Dean, does it matter if they have a license agreement, like sometimes for landscaping purposes, they have a license agreement? That doesn't allow...
No. If the landscape agreement doesn't involve a permanent sign, it certainly wouldn't allow for temporary signs. It allows for the landscaping and the maintaining, but doesn't confer any other rights. This is a typical for-sale or rent sign. This happens to be on a commercial property. And then, just to give the distinction, because this is a commercially zoned lot, the temporary sign can be up to 32 square feet. So, that's the distinction between commercial and residential lots, is that this would be the maximum size allowed for a commercial real estate sign. This is a typical sign. Again, we measured these. We found most of these to be in the four to five-square-foot range, even with the add-ons there, and that is close to being in the right-of-way. This is a permissible temporary sign, but again, it's in the right-of-way, and obviously we have to do a better job of educating the public about what's front yard and what's right-of-way. And then, this is an example of a type of sign that the Planning Commission could not find making a justification for, and so this happens to be located in the right-of-way, but under this text amendment, whether this is on the right-of-way or on this side of the line, that sign would not be permitted because it's off-premise and directing people to another site. That is presently not affirmatively allowed by code today, but if we begin stepped-up enforcement efforts on those types of signs, there will certainly be a reaction to that. But as put together in front of you, the text amendment does not include that. And so, the other items that are, which we discussed in the study session, we are adding a purpose section, because anytime a reviewing court reviews, or the challenge to assign regulations, they're going to try to look at the purposes of what the governing bodies trying to accomplish with the sign regulations, and so the purpose statement says, "This is what our goals are for sign regulation." And then, there's also a substitution clause that we're proposing to be added that says any sign that's allowed that has a commercial message, the owner can change that to a non-commercial speech message without any approvals or permits. So, this was a long road through the Planning Commission, but they did, at their March 21st meeting, come up with a, the text of a recommendation, and so the, what is before you today is based on that recommendation, and we have given you a number of options. You could approve the proposed additions of Section 42-500 and 42-511, and the amendments to the definitions in 42-506 and 507, and the temporary sign rules in Section 42-508 as recommended by the Planning Commission, and approve the ordinance on first reading. You could approve the proposed amendments and additions with any additions, deletions, or modifications to the text that you think are appropriate. If the change that you make is substantial, that could be done at today's meeting, provided you have four affirmative votes for that. If you disagree with some portions of the work that's been done, or you want the Planning Commission to work with staff on some major changes, you could send this item back to the Planning Commission, or you could maintain the status quo and decide that no changes should be made at this time, in which case you should deny the attached ordinance. I might turn it over to Aaron just briefly to give you further guidance on what your discretion is, but you are the final legislative body, and so you can decide what the final content of this should be. It's just that if you make substantial modifications, you would need four affirmative votes today to do that and keep it moving forward. And we would certainly be available to answer any questions or provide guidance on changes that you might want to see.
Mr. Andrew, the mobile signs, was that in commercial areas, or is that...
They are allowed in commercial areas for, we've had a couple. It's fairly rare, but we had a business that was known as Don's Hobby Shop on South Broadway. They didn't have a ground sign or a pole sign at that location, and occasionally, they would come in and get a permit for a mobile sign that they would put out in their front yard if they were having some special sale or event. But it's becoming increasingly rare for those types of mobile signs. There's an auction house on South Broadway that makes use of that tool, and we're trying to keep up with their use of those signs.
The example that comes to mind is an auction sign I often see. I last saw it on the corners, Santa Fe and Crawford, that might be in residential yards, might be in commercials. Is that kind of sign going to be out?
That type of sign is presently disallowed, and it is disallowed under this text amendment because it's too large to be in a residential setting. So, again, we have tried, those locations move and the signs move, but we try to stay a foot of those, but if those types of signs, which are roughly 32 square feet, are not permitted to advertise the sale of real estate in a residential lot. The eight-square-foot limitation is in place today, and we're proposing to keep that eight-square-foot limitation.
Just that question. In the residential areas, the signs can't be regulated by their content, as long as the size and number are okay. So, if a house is for sale or rent, there's a third sign that's allowed, but that sign does not have to say, "House for Sale."
That is correct.
It could say anything that it wants, and I believe, when I read through this, the definition says the house has to be advertised for sale, because the problem comes up, how do you know the house is for sale for that person to get the third sign? And I'm just thinking that if the house, if the sign does not have to say, "For Sale," I'm just wondering if it's easier just to say, you can have three signs, no matter what the purpose or the circumstance, rather than have a special category for a sign that's called a for-sale sign, but technically, it has to be called a yard sign because you can't specify that it have that specific content and be consistent with the law.
Correct. You just have to demonstrate that your house is being offered for sale or for rent. I think it's probably, I mean, I think one approach that we're looking at, we think that the two signs per residential property is actually a fairly generous allocation, and we're doubtful that it's going to be used in many cases. But we just wanted to not be in a position where if somebody is promoting some fundraiser in the community, and they're promoting a vacation Bible school at their church, for us to tell them that they have to take one of those signs down in order to put a "House for Sale" sign in their yard. So, that was the justification for that third sign, and the fact that the U.S. Supreme Court has said that we cannot prohibit people from putting for-sale signs in their yard. has said that we cannot prohibit people from putting for-sale signs in their yard.
But they also said that the sign doesn't have to say "for sale." That's a content base.
Correct.
So we have an ironclad definition of what constitutes a house for sale?
I'll defer that over to Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Erin Martin, Legal Counsel with Clark Meisen Linville, and I took Greg's seat for this segment. As Mr. Andrews mentioned, the base allocation of two temporary signs per residential lot is subject to adjustment during certain events. So it increases, for example, when the property is being advertised for sale or leased by the owner. And in that case, during that event, the owner has allocated one additional temporary sign. So that owner could have three temporary signs in their yard. However, to comply with the Reed versus Town of Gilbert decision, we are not dictating the content of any of those three temporary signs, and technically, the owner could put any message on any of those three signs. We have, because we have not dictated the content, it may or may not be a real estate sign. The issue would become whether or not staff is comfortable administering the regulation that allows for an additional sign when the house is for sale, and how to go about determining whether that house is for sale or for lease. We've talked about that, and some of the practicalities associated with that. But we would not technically need to read the sign to know whether they're complying with that requirement. So I believe the regulation is acceptable as written from the content neutrality perspective.
So then, again, how do you determine if, because the garage sale falls in the same category, it can only be up for total if you have two garage sales six days a year, but how do you know if the persons, are you going to spend the resources to monitor that house to see if a garage sale occurs? Or are you going to go on the real estate list and see if that house is for sale or for rent?
Commissioner, I'm going to paraphrase if I can, and you can tell me if I'm correct, but I think your question is not necessarily related to whether we satisfy the U.S. Supreme Court case, which of course it'd have to, but whether or not, how we could enforce it locally, is that really the question? Is basically how we would enforce that?
If I wanted to have three signs up for, you know, allow drones to fly all year long, and my neighbor says, well, how come he gets three? You know, I could say, well, my house is for sale, and it's, well, you haven't advertised it, but, well, if somebody offers me right of my money, they can have it. So technically, in my mind, it was for sale, but, I mean, is there a legal, we have a definition of what constitutes for sale?
We do not. The language as written states that the additional sign is allowed when the property is being offered for sale or leased by the property owner or a licensed real estate agent.
I think as you balance the options, there is, as we've talked before, there's definitely more complexity with special, what I'd call specialized options or custom options for flexibility versus a broader approach to flexibility, which would be just three signs, put any of these things on there if you want to, no content. I think the idea is to start with two, but allow some of that flexibility if those situations arise, versus to say you get three base amount of signs, and those are the topics, but there's no extras except possibly for the time of year that we're talking about.
Right, and I agree with that. I'm just wondering, since you don't, since the real estate sign doesn't have to say "house for sale," how that's...
How do you enforce it?
Right, I'm just driving around town. Yes, I was hard-pressed to find many houses with one sign, let alone two.
Yeah, I think it would be really difficult to enforce it unless potentially someone was blatantly violating over and over again, and it was very clear that the home wasn't for sale in any form or fashion. That's how I would look at it, more from a practical perspective. And quite honestly, unless there's a real blatant violation, I don't know that we're going to be sending people, put them in line over at municipal court when we're full of other types of crimes. And with all likelihood, we'll probably use a different approach to enforcement, at least, you know, for the typical things you would expect. So, yeah, I don't know. I think, I think it is a little bit difficult. We can, we can try to create a definition, a little better definition for that piece, but it's almost the same if you have a garage sale sign. It's the same question with each, some of each of those exceptions in there that give you a little more flexibility. So part of it's just weighing, general flexibility, start with three, and don't have the more specific, or do more specific and know that it's going to be difficult to enforce with, on case-by-case situations, but not, but we can probably enforce it if it's a just blatant ongoing violation.
I would think in this community, you'd have very few violators, but just in case we got challenged.
Yeah, well, you know, one of the, I think, more practical thoughts that we had is that people really don't like to mow around extra things in their yard, and if they don't have to have them up that long, they're going to take them down anyway. So our thought is, we probably wouldn't have much to enforce, and we certainly wouldn't be putting, again, a lot of attention to it unless there's some blatant issues going on. But you do have two approaches there.
The main challenge that we had is that we have a general prohibition on commercial message signs in residential areas. So the choice was to just say, you can have two signs, and we don't care what they say, including advertising commercial businesses, or we can try to craft some narrow exceptions to the general prohibition on commercial signs. So the approach we took, which is, certainly has been challenging even to get to this point, is to create the three carved-out exceptions, which is for the sign for sale or lease, the sign for open house, or the sign for we're having a garage sale.
I want to go ahead.
I've got three questions. One, feather signs, not a big fan of feather signs, but are they, are they held to the same square footage requirements as a normal sign? Because some of those 13-foot-tall signs seem like they're a lot more than eight square feet of...
They're, they're, we attempted, and we determined, after all the research, unless you've got a better formula approach, it is virtually impossible to calculate the square footage of a feather flag.
Right.
And so the approach that we took was, they're, they're only, the way they're designed, they're not more than 18 inches wide. And so we thought by limiting the height, that was the primary mechanism by which the mass of those would be regulated. But it's extremely hard to measure what the square footage of a feather flag is because of its shape.
So, but on those, you're not limited to, you're limited by, if you, you're limited by linear footage of frontage?
Correct. So if you are, if you are the Dillon Store at Cloud in Ohio, and you want to put out feather flags for some event you're having, you are limited to six per street frontage, and they have to be spaced apart.
Okay.
But six is the most that you can have regardless of frontage. And we had some discussion about using a frontage-based formula, but some places like Mid-State or Central Mall have thousands of feet of frontage, and if you said you get one for every 50 or 100 feet, then you could, so the cap is, recommended was six.
Okay. All right, I'm pro skinny feather, for the record, skinny feathers, no fat feathers. I don't want them starting getting really wide. Second thing is off-premises signs. You mentioned something about Bible school sign being, is that considered content neutral or off-premise when, does it matter where the Bible school is going to be held?
What we're differentiated again, again, is what we would call non-commercial signs versus commercial speech signs. And so a sign directing somebody that a property is for sale or rent, or directing to a yard sale or garage sale, or directing to an open house, that is a commercial message sign that is proposing a commercial transaction. Whereas, a sign that promotes bowl-for-kids' sake, or an MS walk, or a vacation Bible school is a non-commercial message. And so those types of things would be allowed on your property, even though the activity is taking place somewhere else, they're not commercial transaction signs.
Okay. And then my last one is concerning real estate signs. And that is, is that while, and I tend to look at these things, is there, eight square feet is a quarter of a piece of plywood. Your 32 is your big full sheet of plywood. The typical size of two feet by four feet, is that, how is that represented in, are there trends to go to bigger, smaller? Is it based on historical sizes or whatever? Because I had heard from some realtors in town that they are using a different configured sign, so would it make a difference if, is there any restriction to saying, if I had two, two-foot-by-four-foot signs exactly side by side, would that be, why would that be considered different than just saying, just have one 16-square-foot sign? What's, what's the main difference between sort of that?
Well, you're only allowed to have one real estate sign, not two.
Okay. So you're limited to the eight, eight square feet?
Right.
Front and back are considered...
We count, front and back is considered one, one dimension. Where you get into, the different scenario is, there's been a trend in some places towards the cube sign that has four sign faces. Will you, as soon as you get into four sign faces, and you count each side independently, and those probably aren't going to fit within the parameters. But we found that most standard residential front yard, yard signs are between four and five square feet. However, the swing signs that we gave you as an illustration, or the real estate sign where they want to tack on "price reduced," or "open house this Sunday," and tack that onto the sign, then you start getting close to the eight-square-foot. But most real estate signs that we see are five-square-feet or less.
What if I have a large lot, or one that has frontage on two different streets, or, so is there any size of lot or frontage considerations involved with this at all?
No, it's just what the property is zoned. And one thing we did discuss with the development community is, is the concept of the subdivision identification sign, or advertising multiple lots in a subdivision. And our response to that is that we would not consider those to be temporary signs. Those would be signs that we would want to review and issue a permit for, and that, that would be addressed in round two.
There is a provision for double-frontage lots. It's not dimensional necessarily, but it takes into account double-frontage lots.
So the reason that we have this parentheses here for the two there is that, under the Planning Commission's recommendation, if I have a lot and it has a backyard to a street and a front yard to a street, I can have two real estate signs. If I'm on a corner lot, I can have two real estate signs. You're not...
So if I'm at the end of a cul-de-sac, for instance, up on, off of Marymount Road, I could have two, if my cul-de-sac sort of backed into...
Right. So if you are on a cul-de-sac and your backyard backed up to Marymount, you could have a sign on both.
Okay.
Under, under their recommendation.
But there's a limit of one real estate sign, no matter if you've used your two free-yard signs or not.
We want to clarify that the, what we'll call the bonus sign is, you get an extra bonus if you're on a corner lot or you have a double-frontage lot. So if you're just regular Joe with one street frontage, you get one additional sign if your property is for sale or leased. If you were on a corner lot with two frontages, or on a lot that backs up to a street, then you get two additional signs.
So the real estate signs are considered commercial?
Real estate signs are considered to be a sign that is trying to get a commercial transaction to take place.
And that's the reason you could not have two in your front yard? I don't know why you want two, but you couldn't use your two allowed signs?
You could not substitute the two allowed signs because those are non-commercial signs. And the, the three exceptions to being limited to non-commercial signs are, my property's for sale or rent, I'm having an open house inviting the public, or I'm having a garage sale or yard sale, and I'm inviting the public. Those are the three exceptions. But my neighbor down the street cannot let me, even if they give me permission, I can't put a garage sale sign in their yard. And I think that, that will be something that will, probably within the community, there'll be some surprise that that is what we've come up with, that it's not presently allowed.
And I think that's something that I'm having a hard time swallowing, is if, if it's my property and I choose to allow a roofer who's doing work on my house to put his sign in, in my yard, or my neighbor down the street is having a garage sale and I want to direct people there, or, you know, or anything. I mean, I think kind of like if we're content neutral, then let's be content neutral. I, I, I'm not understanding why we're breaking it down with the commercial. I'm sure there's, you know, a rea, I get why we don't want to put things in the right of way, because I could see how, you know, that might pose a traffic issue, but I guess, I'm, I'm team content neutral all the way. I mean, it, it's, it's a person's property, why can't they put what they'd like in there?
And that is a policy decision that you all can make. What we were trying to do is protect the residential, and that's what we're seeing communities do, is try to protect the residential character of their residential areas by keeping commercial advertising sound, signs out. But if, if you are, if you just say you get X number of signs regardless of what they say, then, and it's a policy decision for you to make to say whether that's good or bad, but if, if somebody wants to rent out their front yard to a commercial business to advertise that business, then no one will have any say in that. There may be neighbors who take exception to that and call us and want us to do something about it, but if that is a choice that you make, you could get rid of all the exceptions and say, you get X number of signs, this large, this tall, and we don't care what they say. And that, that is a policy choice. It's just not one that, that we were willing to go down because we were still trying to provide some protection for residential areas. But I'll, I'll see if Mr. Martin agrees with that.
To be sure, then if a contractor's working on a house, the usual courtesy signs that announce their presence will not be allowed the way this is written?
Correct. Because that would be considered a commercial message sign, and this draft, as it comes to you, prohibits commercial message signs except for the three exceptions that we have discussed.
Was that, I don't know how you do it, was that discussed with the contracting business world? If I'm asking that correctly.
This question is probably for you, Dean. From a, from a legal perspective, I'm sure it probably wasn't, because the question that it really poses is, it goes to, do you really, potentially, and I think Erin can address this, do you want to open all the doors up and truly be content neutral, as Commissioner Hodges mentioned? And that, that was part of the question with that sign. So, for example, if you want to poll the commercial folks and contractors, I think I can tell you what they will say, which is, I want to be able to keep doing that. I think that's expected. And you decided to make a decision based on that, then the question comes back to whether or not you want, whether or not legally opens you up so much that you're going to allow all commercial in. And if you want to do that, that's fine. If you don't, and that would allow that, then you have a value judgment, popularity of a particular sign versus opening it up. I think, but I think, Erin, you may want to address a little bit more the contractor sign, if you, if you could.
As Mr. Andrews pointed out, the proposed text amendment generally starts off by prohibiting temporary signs in residential districts from displaying commercial messages. So that is a, kind of a threshold objective of the text amendment before you, and that's certainly within your discretion to change that. But it does generally prohibit commercial signs. And then it goes on to make certain content-based exceptions. And to the extent we begin creating content-based exceptions, we need to be careful how we do that to make sure that we do so in a way that satisfies First Amendment law. And each one of those content-based exceptions that is in the draft text amendment for onsite real estate, open house, and garage sale signs, the Planning Commission endorsed, and we've legally endorsed it. we've legally endorsed it. But any additional exceptions, we would need to make sure that those satisfy First Amendment law, including the construction sign exception, and any other content-based exceptions you may wish to make.
I guess that's the problem, the part I'm having trouble getting around. Using that logic, I would think the sign would have to say, if we're making a content-based exception, that sign should refer to that content. Because the way it's written, the sign does not have to reference that particular activity that's going on. So just because a person's having a garage sale, they can still put up a sign that says abortion's bad. But we've given them their, but the provision for that extra sign was based on an activity we expected, which would imply a certain content on the sign. I guess I'm just, the logic is, I understand what you're saying, but the two rules don't quite seem to be lining up in my mind.
Aaron, would you say that there's a difference between a garage sale sign, even though that is a sale, but the direct, part of that's the benefit of an activity of the owner themselves versus, say, the contractor's sign, which, the contractors will offer a discount. The question is if the sign goes away, are they still going to be competitive in their pricing? And the answer is probably yes. But in that case, what's the real purpose of the sign? And isn't it to have the contractor make others aware of the contractor's work so others will contact the contractor possibly for work, which is more commercially based? And that's part of the difference in the?
Well, I, I could see the commercial versus non-commercial discrepancy, but even in the non-commercial, if, if we say a garage sale is not commercial and that's?
Commercial enough, probably is, yeah.
Right. But we're not even requiring the sign say garage sale. That sign could say anything.
Except, except it couldn't cross over to the commercial message.
It could have any non-commercial message, right. So to give a special circum, exception for a garage sale, we're implying a content or activity, but not requiring it to be on the?
We are, yes.
Which would make me wonder if indeed the better way to go is just totally content.
Let me ask something, because?
I see value on both sides.
Well, let me argue the other side that I'm concerned about, and that is, is that A, we totally open the door to something else, but B, we kind of are getting away from why this is necessary, and that is, if we're reacting to potential, well, the Supreme Court case that, that had to do with the content neutral, it seems to me that, are we not doing this so that we can assure ourselves that we're being consistent in our ordinance, and that we're not running the risk of getting into a situation where we're dictating, like the, I don't know what they call it, maybe time, manner, and, and exercise of whatever that speech is? Because I think once we do open that door, it seems like this Supreme Court case pretty much just says, you can't, you can't base your law on content, it has to be content neutral. So it almost seems like if you, if you just say you have no guideline whatsoever, then you're pretty much open to everything and whatever, can you, can you do quantities at that time?
I, I think this is consistent with your observation, and Aaron can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but we've talked previously about a distinction between commercial speech and non-commercial speech, and, and our regulations being subject to stricter scrutiny if we're trying to regulate non-commercial speech. The other thing that we've talked about is, we can't favor commercial speech over non-commercial speech. So if we end up in a situation where we're saying, we want to allow one additional sign limited to commercial speech, we've kind of put ourselves in a difficult position as it relates to the Supreme Court ruling and the standard we're trying to meet. It's a little counterintuitive to say, we, we want to increase the base number to allow for a garage sale sign, and then we're not going to require it to be a garage sale sign. But if we, if we required it to be a garage sale sign, I think we might be favoring commercial speech over non-commercial speech and find ourselves in trouble.
And that would be, that's addressed in here on number five on the blue sheet, right? That it's like, you're not going, you're not going backwards, you're including, you're, you're able to include non-content as, or business, if it's on, if it's on premises. Because you're basically saying, if you're on premises, it's, you, you have the right on your property to, to do something that, advertise for something that is taking place on that property. In a temporary, let's just, in a temporary sign. I mean, most places you're going to do business and have a permanent sign.
To a degree. One of the, one of the challenges we found in that is, is if you drive around the day, it won't take you long to drive along certain blocks, and you're going to see a motorcycle for sale. You might see a car for sale, you might see a boat for sale, you might see something else for sale. And we talked a little bit about that. That's a bit cumbersome, because that's pretty, fairly often you'll see an item like that outside with a sign on it that says for sale, and maybe a phone number, maybe a price, and a description. That's, today is not a garage sale, or would fit under the garage sale. And we've talked about how to address that. The problem is, is that if you get a garage sale sign, you have a limited time, so those items, you may, may take longer to sell. So that's a bit of another issue that's similar to what you're talking about, that's a challenge in this too. Because we could change the definition and broaden the yard sale or garage sale or what have you, and include personal products, you know, as long as you're not creating a business. That's not a big deal. But if for a garage sale, it's a limited number of days because of, no matter what you put on the sign, because of the reason that you're allowed to have the extra sign, it isn't going to work for trying to sell one of your products like that either. Something that you're not trying to do, create a business, you're just saying, hey, I've had this thing for 10 years, I want to try to sell it, I wonder if I set it out, if I can sell it. We don't provide for that right now. If you had the minimum number of signs, and you included, rather than to go to the extra sign, the minimum number and the base, which you can leave it out there as long as you want, and slightly broaden that definition, you still couldn't cross over the commercial, the true commercial side, but you'd have more flexibility with, I want to sell a personal item that we would define similarly as a single item like a garage sale. There's, there's lots of challenges. And I'll be honest, whatever you approve in the end, we're going to, we're going to end up tweaking it at some point in the future, because there are just so many situations and circumstances.
I think there's, I think you're exactly right. No matter what, what we prove, six months or a year down the line, we'll say, wait a minute.
Well, I, yeah, and I, I think that a big part of this, at least the way I'm seeing it, is that we're trying to catch up with, with law now. And I see it as, there's two things. We can, we can pass a law so that we can maintain ourselves within the law, and our ordinance within the law, or we can pass a, an ordinance to try to curtail some sort of behavior. I don't look at this as we're trying to curtail some sort of behavior. I see this as we're trying to stay within the law and make sure our ordinance is, is within the law and that it's defendable. Is it as simple as that?
That is certainly the primary objective from my standpoint.
All right. Because that's, that's what I got, and that's where I am.
The intent is as simple as that. I still think the devil's in the details a little bit there.
Yeah, I think it'll be interpreted and practiced and everything else in any sort of manner of way, but I'm interested in having an ordinance that is within the, within the law.
In most, most case law, is it? I think that's what we do. We just listen to the case law, and then we do what we think is right. And it might not be.
That's what we try to do.
And a car for sale in the driveway with the for sale sign inside the car, that sign is not counted as a yard sign? Is that correct?
That would not fall within the definition of a temporary yard sign?
I don't know what to do with the beware of dog for sale sign.
How about, can you put a chair on?
Parking and put a free sign on.
Can I ask one more question? I promise it'll be my last one, for Mr. Andrew. Do we get, I'm, there's a part of me that, in addition to being team content neutral here, do, do we get a lot of residential complaints about, say, directional signs being put in yards, or contractor signs being left for too long in yards? I mean, is this, is, is this a thing?
It's, this is not really being driven by complaint, or being complaint-based. If you drive around, you, you will go through neighborhoods, and you might be lucky to see one temporary yard sign. But the, the idea is to give a level playing field for non-commercial speech, and so the, the allocation to allow two people to have, or to have people have two temporary signs that, yard signs that relate to non-commercial speech is to try to give them a form or outlet for those, how those, the, the primary complaints that we get would be signs in the right-of-way, or what Mr. Ryan alluded to, which is the auction sign or for sale sign that's 40 square feet, and it's not supposed to be bigger than eight square feet. That type of situation. But as a general rule, we don't get a lot of complaints about the off-premise garage sale or open house. One of the things about open house signs is that they're usually up for such a brief period of time, they tend not to remain out. The only other observation I would make is that right now, today, if you drove around town, you would be hard-pressed to identify places where somebody had a beauty salon or barber shop, or dog grooming in their home, because we don't allow yard signs for those types of businesses, and this text amendment wouldn't allow for them either. And so the one thing that you have to think about in terms, and what we were thinking about in terms of drafting this, is of not opening up residential areas to commercial messages, that if you're doing accounting or tax preparation in your home, or beauty shop in your home, today, you're limited to having a wall sign on the face of your home. If you say you can have a temporary, two temporary signs regardless of content, then you have to be prepared to see the beauty shop operator, the dog grooming operator, or the daycare provider to put their temporary sign advertising their home-based business in their front yard, which is today not allowed, but would be allowed. And, and the other aspect of this is that, I think a lot of cities are holding back on this, because a lot of what's important is how subsequent courts deal with cases that come up as a result of Reed, and a lot of, you know, there, there could be further clarifications or shakeouts of this case that could very well result in us in coming back to tweaks to this based on how courts react to the Reed decision. And so there's, there's an opinion that comes out almost every week on cases that have been brought, because people thought the Reed case opened doors for suing cities based on content-based regulation. So this, again, it, that is certainly a policy decision that's within your purview to say, you want to be purely content neutral, then the consequence to that is that you're saying that we're not going to distinguish between our residential and commercial zones in terms of commercial signs. We will regulate their size and their number and their location, but we're not going to keep commercial messages out of residential sites, and that's certainly a policy option if that's where you want to go.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
If I may, there's, there's one other thing I feel obligated to, to add to the conversation. Despite considerable deliberation on the part of staff and the planning commission, Commissioner Davis raised a question last week that we, I don't believe, had contemplated, and that was, this home protected by XYZ Security. While that is a commercial company providing a commercial service, we do think that it serves a community service and could probably be justified as contributing to the neighborhood along the longings of a, of a real estate sign. So if you're open to that, staff thinks that we could draft the necessary language between first and second reading to account for security signs, not distinguishing them from a contractor's sign where they're trying to sell their business, but trying to deter break-ins on the basis that there's a security system in the home.
And that would be one of the two yard signs, or a special?
I think that that's probably a sign that is, it's a, what'd you say? Security sign?
Right.
It's a security sign.
I, I think if you stay with the approach, which you need to make the policy decision, but if you stay with the approach of a base of two signs and then categories for additional signs, and we could mirror that approach with a security sign, if you take the approach of a more open-ended base, then we can address it as permissible within the base.
If that security sign was affixed to the wall of the building, is it then no longer a consideration as far as?
A temporary, does that not mean temporary?
We, we do make that type of distinction for a home occupation, but I can tell you from personal experience, I've seen them, you know, prominently in the yard, by the mailbox, in places other than?
Might never be a way around using it, whether it be a two, for the security sign.
You know, we've talked about somewhat differentiation between a permanent and a temporary being stuck in the ground or affixed to a building, but, and I defer to Aaron on the legal, but I, I'm asking myself, is your word any more or less important because it's stuck on a wall or stuck in the ground? And I can't find the difference just yet, practically speaking. So I, my thought is, is you might want to be careful with that, not go too far, but I'd have to defer that to Aaron.
Sure. And the, the yard sign versus the permanent wall sign, those are structural categories of signs, and the zoning code does provide for certain permanent structural categories of sign in various districts, including residential districts. If, if a, for example, a security sign were permanently mounted to a residence, that would not be a temporary yard sign any longer, and it would not, no longer be subject to the yard sign regulations, but rather it would be subject to the permanent sign regulations in the resident, residential district, and we'd have to look at those to tell you whether that's allowed or disallowed.
Not to disparage anyone's sign, but how many of you would like to have those signs affixed to your house? Probably not a lot of people would, when it's easier just to stick it in a little garden area where it can be seen when someone walks up to your door.
As long as a would-be thief can see it.
No kidding.
Okay, any other questions? Public comment?
Good evening.
I thought I saw some realtors out there.
Mayor Crawford, commissioners. Obviously, we spent a long time on this particular issue with the planning commission. First of all, I'm Owen Freiburger, 937 Highland Avenue. I am chairman of the Salina Planning Commission, liaison to the zoning board. I also own and operate Next Home Pro Realty, his broker. So I, one of those signs was mine that you saw. And it did not include all the riders, so I'm basically wanting to clarify two things tonight. First, I want to thank Mr. Andrew and our staff, and Mr. Martin for a lot of hard work. We did discuss it in depth, we had study sessions, we looked at how many feather flags there should be, we counted them all up, we measured them, we had people come in and show us. So we firmly decided that these size measurements were adequate in what we needed, not smaller, not larger. We did not agree, however, on the vendor sign issue. I voted against the amendment, along with 100% on the commission. So I didn't want it to seem that the planning commission with absolutely no reserve said this was the deal. I felt that taking vendor signs out of yards is doing exactly what I would not want to happen to me. My livelihood is based, obviously, on signage. We know that it drives the market to property. Even the internet and other sources that we have aren't as important as signage. So I did not want to sit in that seat as chairman of the planning commission and say, I have a sign, but Calabrese, you don't, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as we go down the line. It's unfair to, in my thinking, to remove those signs from people's yards. Also, there is the aspect that as a homeowner, I really feel that I have a right to advertise for anyone that does work for me. But again, I'm biased because my clients assume there'll be a sign in their yard, and they expect one, and that sign is important to them. So we look at it in different ways, but I just want to clarify the point that I didn't vote for that particular aspect of it, because there is no way I could argue that to another entrepreneur, or another small business owner who make up a large part of the fabric of this community and our economic force. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Randall Holm, Hometown Realty. Commenting on what I really came to the meeting to comment about. Madam Commissioner, Madam Chairman and Commissioner's Mayor?
That's okay, I'm neither one.
My apologies. I want to put another plus in what he just said, and maybe I won't have I want to put another plus in what he just said, maybe I won't have to repeat it as much, but Dean did comment that, basically, there haven't been complaints about the temporary real estate directional signs, on those that are placed on the property, not on the right-of-way. We're correcting a problem that's not a problem, we're interfering in what I feel are constitutionally guaranteed rights of property owners. If the commission passes this as proposed, you will be further infringing on personal property rights of individual property owners, and I ask that you not allow that to happen. Government is already infringing on our rights more and more each day when we allow it. Please, don't infringe further. As to yard sale signs, Dean was at least mostly right on sizes. Owen's and my signs both exceed the eight feet on some occasions, because when you add not only the prop, the sign proper, but the upper rider, the lower riders, and an information box to that sign, in many cases, it exceeds it. Mine, on occasion, exceeds, and let me look at, eight square feet by about .68 square feet. If I've got, so I run 8.68 square feet with my somewhat standard sign, but not totally standard sign. Owen's signs run up to that eight square feet possibly, if he's got all of his riders, and maybe exceeds it on occasion. The Realty Associates sign that had the two posts and the four-by-eight sheet of plywood, by the way, if you took a close look at that dimensionally, that was more than six foot tall. It was within the 32 square feet, but the posts were out of the ground enough, it was probably closer to six and a half feet tall. We've got a system that maybe needs some clarification due to Supreme Court rulings, but we don't want to end up with even more restrictive and issues that also be, could be contested on personal property rights, individual rights, the freedom of speech rights. John talked on that, Melissa talked on that, God bless you both for that. We have a situation in Salina right now where we already have selective discrimination with the placement of signs in the right-of-way. The city has stated that due to public safety and the unsightly appearance of signs in the right-of-way, they shouldn't be allowed, yet on a regular basis, the city allows signs, and I'm not talking traffic directional signs, to be placed in the right-of-way when they deem it's of public interest, which means it depends on who you are and what your message is, not on your freedom of speech right, that those signs be able to be placed there. I am arguing that at an absolute minimum, if the city or somebody else can place a sign in my right-of-way with or without my permission, why can't I have a total determination at a minimum over what's said on the signs on my property, not the right-of-way? The directional open house signs are of great importance to getting homes sold. True, we have print advertising, radio advertising, TV advertising, the computer age advertising and that, but a huge number of the participants at open houses, show up at open houses, not because of any of those factors, but because driving by, they saw a directional sign or the sign in the yard. They may not have had any interest in even looking at a house that might be for sale, till they spotted that directional sign and realized, hey, we've kind of talked about maybe looking at something in that neighborhood, you know, let's go look at this. You know, we're not really looking to buy right now, but let's go look. Well, that person may or may not end up being the end result buyer, but their going and looking at that house may cause them to mention it to somebody else, who then does end up being the end result buyer. And believe me, it's of our public interest for property and real estate in Salina, Kansas, to sell it as top a dollar as we can get for that property owner, not only for that property owner's benefit, but also to keep property tax income up as much as possible and spread as fairly throughout the community as possible. At this point in time, I ask that you very seriously consider changes in the proposal that will allow the directional signs for open houses, for the individual commercial signs, when a contractor does work on a property, if that property owner's wanting to allow that, at a minimum, they ought to be able to allow it within their own property, if not also in the right-of-way. Personally, I don't think if my sign isn't allowed in a right-of-way, no signs other than traffic directional ought to be allowed in a right-of-way. If it's been good enough in the past for my sign not to be in the right-of-way and create enough traffic, it should have been good enough for the others also. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How would you gauge your understanding of Reed versus Town of Gilbert?
My understanding of that is, it's freedom of speech, whatever the property owner wants to say.
I think that's not a fair interpretation of that Supreme Court decision.
But if you also look at the original writings, I think it is.
What original writings?
First Amendment to our Constitution.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm no attorney here, but when the Supreme Court makes a decision on something, it's law.
True.
Okay, so, my point, that's just my, my question was, because that's what we're dealing with here, is trying to keep the city within the four corners of the law here, and I will just say, just for your peace of mind, whoever's been posting their signs in the right-of-way has not done so at the blessing of the city.
Well, according to the city, they told me they were, as far as the River Festival, the Farm Show, and some other signs.
Well, I don't know who you spoke to at the city about that, but Dean, you want to...
At the Planning Commission meeting.
I mean, what is the, what does the ordinance state as to who's there, what's there, whatever?
Official government signs or traffic control signs are allowed in the right-of-way. We will, everyone can in their own mind decide whether those, in their mind is a government, official government sign, but that is the exception, is traffic control signs and signs that are official government signs are not prohibited from the right-of-way. But we also don't issue permits for those.
Just so we're clear, what we're referring to is the A-frame wayfinding signs that direct to the River Festival and...
Right, okay.
But, and I'm not saying that that is all bad, just that if they're, if it's bad for us as a commercial operation to have a sign in the right-of-way, it's wrong for another commercial activity, even if it's government-sponsored, because both the Farm Show and the River Festival promote commercial activity as much or more than my real estate sign. And I'm using that as an argument not to ban my real estate sign in that non-owner-for-sale property location, at least on that other property owner's property. And in reference to the earlier comment about the Supreme Court decision, that was on one specific issue, it is not, is not meant to limit any others. I think you've got a limiting issue here that would and could go to the Supreme Court, and you'd lose on, based on where you're headed.
Mr. Holm.
You're also looking at discrimination, potential problem also.
I think we're trying to avoid those.
I know you're trying to avoid it. I'm trying to tell you, I think you're stepping in the wrong direction with that. I ask you to please consider what I've said and what other parties have said. I'd like to personally seen, see that temporary sign raised to a maximum of nine square feet instead of eight square feet. I think that then would cover everybody that's currently in business in Salina that has real estate signs already, and the riders and the potential information box information, square footage. And in, I understood Dean correctly, on the standard-type real estate signs, not the four-sided or whatever, he's only talking the square footage of one side of the sign in that total, correct?
If it's a back-to-back sign, we measure one.
Yeah. But, I think we're delving into an issue where there haven't been problems in getting more restrictive, instead of even staying at a level keel where we could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holm.
Any other questions?
Quick question, if I may. Mr. Holm, I'm going to try to paraphrase him, I want to make sure I'm understanding what you said. So, would you support then the, any, for the homeowner on their property to have any message, commercial or non-commercial, and also for off-site signs?
Yes, I would personally. Whether or not you agree, totally with that or not is up to you, but as a personal property rights advocate, I think the property owner should have the most control, not the city, over what they do on their property.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Quite a few out there.
Well, I know. Is there anybody else like to comment? I think we have more.
Can the issue of contractor signs be determined as special category and on temporary commercial signs, can that be carved out of this and brought back for discussion later? Would that require total change in the zoning?
I think what Mr. Martin indicated is if that is a direction that you wanted to go, that would be something that would probably best be addressed in a closed session or executive session to try to come up with what that justification might be, because the Planning Commission was not able to come up with a justification for that exception, and so, we don't come armed or prepared to address that, even if you said you wanted to give us a week to... The reason it was not included in the Planning Commission's draft is that they could not come up with a substantial government interest in making that exception. So, if, if there's an inclination to go there, the choices are to try to justify an exception or to go over to where Mrs. Hodges is and say, we don't care what the content is at all, and then you're simply looking at no commercial message exceptions, this is how many signs you get, and we're not concerned about what they say. That would be the absolutely cleanest approach, is to have no exceptions, you just, everyone has to understand that they would be opening up residential areas to commercial speech.
But right now, there is a distinction between commercial and non-commercial messages in residential neighborhoods, with their current regulations.
There currently is, yes. If you wanted to put up a commercial sign advertising some commercial business or directing them to a flea market or to a restaurant or whatever, and you put that up in your yard in a residential district, that would be a violation of the current sign code.
And there's no temporary commercial message allowance?
Doesn't matter whether it's temporary or permanent, it's not allowed.
With the exception of real estate and garage sale and open house, those are technically within the commercial category. And the other thing I was going to note is, generally, courts do not view the distinctions between commercial and non-commercial as content-based. Those are two kind of fundamental categories of speech, and distinguishing between those two in your sign regulations is not technically a content-based regulation, it's when you start creating exceptions within those broad categories among various types of non-commercial speech.
I was going to ask, thank you, I was wondering if that distinction was even allowed.
Yes, so that distinction, that's why we were comfortable with that, and that's why we've made that.
Takes some getting used to. House next door to me is getting painted, and of course, I get home, but after the guy's gone home, it's the only way I can find out who's painting it is to, you know, look for his little sign, so everyone have to have a big lettering on the side of their truck then, I guess.
Commissioners, if there are any other exceptions or anything, I think it's important, you can, you know, just because we put it on your agenda this evening, this afternoon, this evening, however you want to look at it, doesn't mean you have to come to an answer today, it sure'd be nice, but we realize this is a pretty multi-dimensional issue and takes a lot of thought. So, with that said, we have the one item that Commissioner Davis brought up had to do with the contractor signs. Are there any other aspects of this that we've talked about this evening that any of you have concerns about or would like possibly Aaron to address, or anything else? Be nice if we have, whatever that list is, if it's just the one item, that's fine, but if there are more...
Contracting the security signs, yeah.
Yeah, if you have any more, we'd like to try to tack them all at once, so we can then make any adjust, any final adjustments to the ordinance.
Okay, here, let me just kind of put where I am on this thing, because I think I might be at odds with, isn't anything new, but with the, with the board on this thing, and I don't know, what do you call the whereas is? Recitals. Recitals, okay. You know, when I read this ordinance and I go through the recitals, I don't know how I start to separate, which is the purpose, when it states the purpose, number one on the blue sheet, I don't know how I can read through that part, through the recitals, and then know what I know about, in my limited knowledge, of what Reed versus Town of Gilbert is all about, and see how I can separate out any of this and have this in any way at all possible in the form that it's in now, without being practically worthless, from a, from a being able to enforce it standpoint, without any challenge.
If I'm understanding correctly, you would have concerns about modifying it from its present form?
Well, I would, I would say, I don't know how you pick and choose and modify it when you say, it seems pretty streamlined to me. I'm apt to adopt it as is, because I can tell you, sign ordinances, they're not cast in stone, some of them are, but the case is, is that some of this is going to take some, there are going to be some things that nobody's thought of in here, and I think at that point, we're going to have to figure out what those are and how they fit within the law as it is now, because of Reed versus Town of Gilbert. And I think that, I think that we can go around and around and around with everything on this thing, and I think, for me, the prudent approach is to say, let's make sure that we have an ordinance that is defendable, and then as things come up, if we find that those things are defendable, then let's bring them in, but I want to get something in place.
I agree with that. I think we, just to get it in place, and then we could always go back and later on, down the road, amend it or change it.
I'm interested that we have an ordinance that's defendable.
Yeah, I think so, too.
This is a beginning, I'm sure comments will develop as the year goes on.
Would it be safe to say that perhaps the way, if we try to enforce our, our side in ordinance the way it exists today, would fly in the face of that Supreme Court decision in some instances? I mean, talking about, I mean, our current ordinance doesn't address content neutral.
We are taking this opportunity to fix and clarify some things, and I would, we're in the same boat as most cities when it comes to trying to catch up with the current state of the law.
All right. I'm open for someone to tell me why that wouldn't be a good...
We don't have 1,600 inspectors that are going to go out there and run all over town all the time and find people, I don't think, anyway. That's my thought, so, I think it's all right. Anyway, any other questions, concerns? Free speech worries?
Now, I'll tell you what, I'll lead out, make a motion, if it goes somewhere, it goes, and I'll just move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 17-10882. And what was the one caveat that we were looking at, if it needed to come back on second reading?
I've got a note here to look at the issue of security signs.
Okay, with, with the expectation that the, that security signs will be addressed in, on the second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that we approve on, is this taken second reading?
It will.
It will, okay. Okay, that we approve on first reading, ordinance number 17-10882. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, all right, passed. And I think you have something over there from your other business? Commissioner?
I'm sorry. Wonder if I do the right thing sometimes. I move to recess into executive session for 60 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 7:30, I'm sorry, 8:35 PM, to allow a five-minute break.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. I'm sorry.
Aye.
And she says we're done.
We won't be back, correct?
Okay.
Oh, I hope not.
Did we vote on the adjournment?
No, for the second session.
Executive session.
Oh, executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, now.
Commissioners, for the public's benefit and the... Commissioners, for the public's benefit, and the media, we do not expect to come out and have you take any action.
I am too, I'm tired, I'm hungry, and all that stuff.